This conference will now be recorded.
And by the way, this conference will now be recorded. And all to order. And we will start with the pledge of allegiance. Brian, do you want to lead us in the?
Absolutely.
Okay.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Thank you. Agenda item two, we have decided we will delay the approval of the minutes so that everybody has a chance to read them. And so at the next meeting, we will have three sets of minutes to read, to review.
Chairman, if this is Jennifer, if I could just suggest, since it's an agenda item, if we have a motion to table the approval of the minutes until the next meeting.
Okay, somebody want to make a motion to delay the approval of, I guess, two sets of?
I'll make a motion table.
Second.
Okay. Roll call.
All right, David Dunbar.
Hi.
Brian Height.
Hi.
Diane Kelly.
Hi.
Bill McNair.
Hi.
Vinnie Quinn. I don't believe Vinnie Quinn is present. Alan Tope.
Yeah, hi.
And David Wilson.
Hi.
Motion passes six to zero.
Okay. All right. And we're going to start out with item three is a comprehensive plan update summary to just give a summary. And for everybody here, we have thirty-two people here right now. To me, this is the key part of our planning process, and we're going to go through it just a brief introduction right now, and we're going to be talking about it after we get through our development items cases today. So is this Dave?
Yeah, I think Dave, I see Dave in the room still.
Okay.
Hello, everyone. My name is David Manhart, a director of GIS. Kind of the project manager for the on-plan update. We've been periodically doing updates either through for the planning commission, public meetings, or BOC meetings or joint meetings. Tonight, we have an update for the planning commission. We're focusing on the next phase of the update process. And we're calling it the how should we grow? So the first phase before this, we asked about where we should grow. And now we want to try and figure out how we should grow or how that growth should look. So we'll go over that survey and then also talk about the steps after that. So phase four, which is kind of the subcommittees. And if you can't make a meeting, or if you can't hang out for the whole meeting, it will be, we'll post this presentation on the our blog we have. It's SWTcompplan.org. And this presentation will be on there as well as links to the survey and all that. So stay tuned to that.
Okay, and Dave, as we go through this, also, go ahead. We also like to talk some about the where we grow to and how that relates to some of the the zoning change requests we've had. And how that works together with the comprehensive plan.
Yep, we can do that.
Okay.
I don't want to, I want to do this outside, but just listen.
Do you want to mute your phone? Okay. Okay, agenda item four is the subdivision review. We have, we had three, the Blue Barn Road subdivision has been delayed, will be come up at a later meeting. So the two we have this meeting this evening are parking lot improvements to seven ninety-eight Housman Road and George Sam minor plan. And so we'll start with the proposed parking lot improvements at seven ninety-eight Housman Road, and this will include a, as we normally do, a staff presentation, an applicant presentation, courtesy of the floor, and then planning commission decision. So Greg, I'll turn it over to you for the staff presentation.
Thank you, Bill. This is an application to further develop the property located at seven ninety-eight Housman Road. The plan proposes the construction of a new driveway aisle and eleven new parking spaces, stormwater management improvements, and the installation of a new water line on the zero point eight one acre portion of the six point zero seven two acre site. The High Valley Health Network is the owner and applicant. I'll skip right to the recommendation. The Community Development Department recommends that the planning commission take the plan under advisement to afford the applicant the time necessary to address the reviewing agency's comments. Our recommendation is contingent upon the applicant granting the township a waiver from the timeframe in which to act upon the plan. Those dates are the planning commission, and this is a soft date of November sixteenth, twenty twenty. But the hard date is the Board of Commissioners deadline to act on the plan is December sixteenth, twenty twenty.
Okay. Turn it over to the applicant.
Hi, Kate Kershaw here on behalf of the applicant.
Hi, Kate.
Hi, and I believe, I'm trying to scan the index here of individuals that are on this meeting, and I believe that Fidel Gonzalez is here as well, our engineer.
Okay.
And Stacy Hogan from Leah Valley Health Network is here as well. And I know there was some discussion during the pre-meeting about outstanding zoning issues that need to be addressed, and I did have a call with Greg and Laura last week, and they were gracious enough to to walk me through what their concerns were, and we are, I was a little misunderstanding misunderstanding there for a little bit because I thought there was maybe some more discussion they were going to have on the topic of the setback and whether or not a variance was needed in that respect, but hearing them weigh in tonight, that's the direction it sounds like they want us to go, and we'll gladly do that. Laura, I just wanted to confirm with you, is the filing deadline for the next zoning hearing board on Monday?
Let me double check because if that would be for November, the date may change. Bear with me one minute.
Certainly, thank you.
I have to pull up another screen. Okay, the next meeting date would be November twenty-third, and the cutoff date for submission would be October nineteenth.
Okay, thank you. And I'm in receipt of the review letter dated October eighth, twenty twenty, which has four actually itemized zoning notations here, one of which is the setback issue, which is item number four in that letter. And today, I know that there was a detailed illustration submitted by Fidel Gonzalez to Greg Adams, which I'm hopeful effectively takes care of the planting strip and consecutive parking space issue.
From my opinion, it does, but that's a zoning issue, so I will defer to Laura on that one.
Yes, I did see the, the plan that was submitted, and the only question I had in addition to Greg asking for the handicap was if it was going to be curbed around there. Or if it was just a ramp. Because he said it was going to be ADA accessible, but I was wondering, is that area going to be curbed?
Sure.
Around the greenway.
Fidel, are you available to weigh in on that, please?
Saw him earlier, but I don't see him now. Oh, yeah, no, he's on that.
He's on, but the speaker's not operational.
Do we have that updated picture to put, to put up here to show?
The one I have is the one I've got up here, Laura. Greg, you're muted if you're trying to say something.
Sorry. I believed it was curbed. If there's an ADA ramp, that infers to me there is a change of height. So it's going from the grass to the immediate north of the parking lot down to basically asphalt level on the parking lot. So in my reading of the plan, it appeared to be curbed.
Right, but it didn't designate specifically. It was not noted.
Yeah, yeah, so I think I think Fidel just dropped off. He may try to remake contact.
And other than that, it looked good. It's just a matter, it just needs to be definitive and noted on the plan, not that we guessed. We shouldn't have to ask if it's curved. It should just, it should be there.
Okay. And Fidel is not able to unmute.
Looks like he's having some trouble at the moment.
Okay. All right. And what, just to confirm, looks like he disappeared. Maybe he's going to try and call in again.
That's fine, and I understand the comment and it can be noted on the plan appropriately.
Okay. So is that, does that take care of the that question with the, so we still have the, to go to zoning for the the setbacks? Is, is the lighting okay? Now? Did we?
I believe, I believe it basically meets the requirements at this time. I'd like to double check it again when the next submission comes in.
Okay. And so, and so from what, what we're hearing that the let me see, the, the second one we talked about, the, the number of parking spaces and planting strip and all that, so in the new parking plan? And are the two large parking spaces and one oversized parking space now included also?
Yes, they were added. One was added to the front. Well, I don't know, Greg and I had this discussion, which is the front and which is the rear. It's like, did the chicken come first to the egg? There is one, what I call the rear of the building. They added one. It's not shown on this plan, but it is taken care of.
Okay. All right. Okay, so basically, it seems like the the first three are essentially done. We'll, we'll get the plan coming back the next time. So is the process then, we will need, you will need to go to the zoning hearing board to get a a variance for the setback. Did you find out any information on your previous? What was the previous distance? How that was set?
Greg, you want to answer that one with the coordinated development?
In the research that I've done on the the prior plan submissions back in the mid two thousand, mid two thousands, as far as I can tell, it was simply put at a deficient parking setback only because it was a coordinated development at the time. And interior lot lines and setbacks wouldn't apply within a coordinated development. And as you, as you can see by the plan here, that is facing the interior of the Luther Crest campus. So it's not an exterior property line, so it wouldn't really count. Therefore, it wasn't considered at the time.
Okay. And so that would just have to be explained to the zoning hearing board and see what they have to say about it, and then come back to the planning commission, and we look at the last set of revisions on these drawings, the lighting plan, the parking lot, and then we're ready to go?
Correct.
Yeah, in theory, if, if they get that variance, they should, with the next plan revision, should have a very clean plan.
Okay. Okay, any, anybody from the planning commission have any questions?
This is Fidel. I was able to join again, sorry.
Okay. Thank you, Fidel. And we were asking, what was that about the curb?
The extension to pedestrian walkway, this is Laura, the zoning officer. The pedestrian walkway, you submitted a photo over today of a revised plan showing the pedestrian walkway connecting to Bluebird Lane. And I just wanted to clarify if there was curbing around the grass area, because I know Greg had asked if it was ADA accessible. So we figured a ramp was there, but it just wasn't noted on the plan, and we just wanted to know if it could be noted on the plan if it was in fact curved around that area for the pedestrian walkway.
Yeah, yeah, so the intent was to have curbing there. There is line work there that show kind of two parallel close lines. And yeah, we can note that on that. We'll be using that as a detail, so if you have any other feedback, we'll just add that to that detail and then place that detail on the plans.
Okay, it sounds good.
Okay.
I do have one comment. Looking at Google or aerial imagery, it looks like there there's a tree or two in where that new walkway is. If that's the existing condition, I'm assuming the trees will need to be removed. Will they be replaced in a nearby location?
Yes, so, yeah, the, the tree would be impacted by the sidewalk. It's, it's very close. But we are anticipating that there would be a replacement tree for that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions from the planning commission? All right, we'll, we'll open it up courtesy of the floor. Any comments, questions?
Mr. Chairman, I'm not showing anything in the chat box, but I would ask any of the callers that might be on the phone, are there questions at this time regarding this particular item? Not seeing any. Think you're good to go.
Okay. All right, I guess we'll take this under advisement. I guess the question is, are, is the applicant willing to sign a extension letter? Is that the right term?
Yes.
A waiver? You are willing?
Waiver letter, yeah.
Waiver letter?
Yep.
Okay. All right, so I guess, take a motion to take this under advisement? So they get to the planning, okay. Diane? Okay, that's who'd we get? Diane?
Dave Dunbar.
Okay, Dave, okay. Roll call.
All right, Dave Dunbar.
Hi.
Brian Height.
Hi.
Diane Kelly.
Hi.
Bill McNair.
Hi.
Alan Tope.
Hi.
David Wilson.
David Wilson.
David Wilson.
Hi, I was on mute, sorry.
Okay. All right.
Motion passes six to zero.
Okay. Thank you.
Kate, before you go, do I send the waiver to you or over to Peter?
Oh, you can send it to me.
Okay, will do.
Thank you.
Thanks. All right, we'll, we'll move on to the second development case today. George Sam, Minor Plan twenty twenty dash two oh one. Greg, you want to do the staff presentation?
Sure. All right, this is an application to re-subdivide the properties located at two four four nine Walbert Avenue, which are, which currently contains an existing dwelling and two garages oriented toward Walbert Avenue on a three point oh four six eight acre parcel and two four two one Belmont Street, currently containing an existing dwelling on an approximately zero point five seven acre property. The plan proposes to create a new lot line along the current R four medium densities residential NC neighborhood commercial zoning district boundary and remove the lot line between two four four nine Walbert Avenue and two four two one Belmont Street. The re-subdivision would result in two four four nine Walbert Avenue, which would contain the existing building and two garages oriented toward Walbert Avenue on a now one point zero one three one acre parcel and two four two one Belmont Street, containing the existing dwelling on a, on a proposed two point seven six five four acre property. The subject properties are zoned NC Neighborhood Commercial along Walbert Avenue and R four medium density residential to the north of unopened Belmont Street. George E. Sam is the owner of two four four nine Walbert Avenue and the applicant. I'll do a little history on this. Previous consideration, on June twentieth, twenty nineteen, Elysium Acquisitions submitted an application for Roosevelt Street Flats Major Plan twenty nineteen one oh two, which proposed the subdivision of the existing property into five lots, four of which each would have one two-flat dwelling unit, and the fifth lot would have the remaining Walbert Avenue-oriented parcel. The plan was reviewed by Planning Commission at their July eighteenth and September nineteenth, twenty nineteen meetings, at time, at which time they took the plan under advisement. The plan has not been resubmitted, and the most recent waiver from time limitation to review the plan expires on November thirtieth, twenty twenty. The Community Development Department recommends that the planning commission take the plan under advisement to afford the applicant time necessary to address the reviewing agency's comments. Our recommendation is contingent upon the applicant granting the waiver, the township a waiver from the timeline in which to act on the plan. However, should the planning commission find the plan sufficient to advance them to the Board of Commissioners, we would recommend that the applicant comply with the following conditions. One, if deemed to be necessary, subdivision improvement, security, maintenance, and indemnification agreements acceptable to township be executed, that sufficient security in the form acceptable to the township be posted. Such security shall be available for draws, presentation, no further than sixty miles from the township office, and evidence of necessary insurance coverage be provided to the plan being recorded. Two, that the applicant addressed to the satisfaction township engineer the comments of the township engineer as contained in his review letter dated October eighth, twenty twenty. Three, that the applicant addressed to the satisfaction of the Community Development Department the comments of the department as contained in its review dated October ninth, twenty twenty. Four, that the applicant obtains a review from the LVPC prior to the plan being presented to the South Whitehall Township Board of Commissioners. Five, if deemed to be necessary, the applicant shall obtain a letter from Lehigh County Conservation District approving the N E N S C Control Plan pursuant to section three twelve dash thirty-nine E of SALDO. Six, if deemed to be necessary, the applicant shall obtain a letter from P A D E P approving the sewage facilities, planning module, or exemption thereto. Seven, if deemed to be necessary, the applicant shall obtain a highway occupancy permit from the, from PennDOT for the road and utility work within the right-of-way of Walbert Avenue. Eight, that the applicant complies with the forthcoming recommendation of the Public Safety Commission. Nine, that the applicant complies with forthcoming recommendation of the Landscape and Shade Tree Commission. Ten, if deemed to be necessary, the applicant shall dedicate to the township additional right-of-way along the frontage of Walbert Avenue at a width acceptable to the township. This dedication shall occur prior to the plan being recorded. The dedication shall be by deed of dedication in a form acceptable to township solicitor and an opinion of record title prepared by the applicant's counsel indicating that the dedication is free and clear of liens and encumbrances that would affect the township's use of said property. The applicant shall furnish to the township solicitor a description of the dedication that has been approved by the township engineer, a copy of the current deed for the property showing the current ownership, and recite deed book, volume, and page reference. Eleven, that the plan be amended to include note referencing state highway law pursuant to section five oh eight point six of P A M P C and section three twelve dash twelve eight nine of SALDO. Twelve, that the applicant reconciles all open invoices for township engineering and legal services prior to the plan being recorded, and thirteen, that the plans are revised and deemed to be clean before them being presented to the Board of Commissioners. Planning Commission deadline to act upon the plan is November sixteenth, twenty twenty, as a soft date. The hard date for the Board of Commissioners to act on the plan is December sixteenth, twenty twenty.
Thank you, Greg. Okay, now, presented by the applicant.
I'm Mark Luth. I'm here for Lehigh Engineering on behalf of George Sam. George is in attendance. George, would you like to say anything?
Yes, that we pulled out of that agreement with you.
Okay, I think what Mr. Sam's referring to is
the reduced price on selling it to junior debt.
And again, what George is referring to is a previous submission under file and acquisitions. That, that plan is no longer in play. In fact, some of the neighbors had some issues with it. Mr. George, I'm sorry, George Sam negotiated with one of the neighbors, Mr. LaGaff, and Mr. LaGaff accepted George's offer to buy the property that abuts his property at a reduced price. And what we're here for tonight is that plan that you see in front of you, where we're going to remove the lot line between the LaGaff property and the rear of the George Sam property.
Okay.
In terms of the engineering letters, my firm has those engineering requests revised already. I really have, you've got, obviously, as always, done a very good in-depth review. There, there are just a couple of things I felt I should call out on the South Whitehall, I believe this is the South Whitehall review, number two, on the status of Emerson and Belmont Streets, which you'll notice the plan that's in front of you on the computer. Emerson and Belmont are, they look like paper alleys, but from what I have gotten from Greg and Laura is that those streets are no longer owned by the township, and the township has no rights to them. So Mr. LaGaff's property fronts Emerson, and we have a little bit of frontage on the rear portion of the George Sam property, I believe forty feet that butts Roosevelt Street. So I just wanted to tell you the status of Emerson and Belmont. As far as I know, they are not township bone. Number three on that same sheet is a comment I will get to and combine with Greg's review. Other than that, nothing on those comments has any real significance. When I go to Greg's review, under zoning, this is Greg's review, and it's your page fifty-nine, I believe, of your packet. That's correct. On South Whitehall Township Letterhead dated October ninth, under zoning, number three, I'd like to talk a little bit about the necessity for a buffer strip between the NC District and the R four District, and of course, the neighboring properties. There, there are existing tree lines that are existing tree lines that are, that are out there today, and in fact, it was really one of the, the arguing points of the neighbors when we had proposed running utilities on the unopened alleys that they have very large mature trees, some of which are 30 feet. Uh, these trees exist there today. On the Legath side of the property, uh, there are quite a few outcroppiced trees between the commercial property up front and the residential property up back. And the residential property up back is almost entirely buffered by trees. Um, so I, I, I know it says the necessity may need to be confirmed, I would like to confirm whether or not, um, you know, we'd be willing to leave the existing buffering trees there uh, until, until the time that anything else might be proposed on these lots. At this point, all we're doing is drawing a line on this plan that basically takes the commercial portion to the front and, and makes it its own lot and the residential portion at the back combining to the Legath property. There's no proposed construction and/or use at this point other than what's existing.
Has a professional, um, checked the health of those existing trees? Do you know the condition of those trees?
Uh, I'm not a professional, I've been out there plenty of times and they're green and they're standing.
Okay, so an arborist hasn't looked at them and said if they're healthy?
You have not hired an arborist to, to check the status of the trees.
Okay.
Hi, Flora here. Um, yeah, Mark, I agree with you, it was put in there as a formality because, you know, we just want to make sure that we know right now the single-family dwelling for, that's going to remain down here on Lot 1 is not happening anything right now, but, you know, future moving forward, you know, just make it noted, you know, that, um, Mr. Sam knows that anything done down front, it's going to require a buffer.
I absolutely, I absolutely agree with that, you're right.
Yeah, I mean, and as long as they remain now, and like you said, to us, it's supposed to be the lot line adjustment, one line moving and that's it.
Okay. Uh, so, so, does anybody else have any questions on that matter before I move on?
Go ahead.
Okay, um, so on number five, the, the only existing noncore, non-conformity I can, I can riddle off about being your zoning officer would be just the existing, uh, or road frontage requirements. Uh, the requirement would be 80. I have 40 on the rear lot that's going to be combined with Mr. Legath who actually fronts Emerson and, and has way more than 80. Uh, unfortunately, it's just not a township-owned road, uh, although it's a pre-existing non-conforming, uh, situation and we're actually probably decreasing his non-conformity by adding the 40 feet from Roosevelt to his actual frontage on Emerson. Uh, I don't know if you have a paper plan in front of you, Mr. Legath has 197.19 plus or minus feet on Emerson. Um, and then adding 40 to that as well. So that would be the only two things under zoning I can speak of unless anybody has any questions on that matter.
Yeah, Mark, uh, let me confirm that, um, Emerson is not a public street, therefore it does not count as frontage. But you are correct, this plan would, um, bring Mr. Legath's property closer to conformity.
Correct, you're, you're absolutely right, no argument there. And I'll ask one more time before we move along, any other questions? Okay, uh, so I, I think the real, uh, point I need to talk about tonight, and I would just like to iron this out on this meeting going forward, is the idea of requiring any improvements to Walbert Avenue. The home in the front of this lot that fronts Walbert's probably well over 100 years old. Uh, I've looked back to Penn, uh, Penn Pilot Program, uh, in the 1940s and, uh, believe it or not, Grandview Cemetery was there and this house, uh, was there. I can't say for a fact that that, I, I did provide some exhibits for you through Greg today, uh, from Google Maps which show, there's a, a fairly, uh, nice sized retaining wall on the frontage of this property that runs from the, uh, eastern edge of the property all the way to the Grandview Cemetery with the exception of a driveway. Uh, you know, it's been, it's been, yep, there they are, and you can see, uh, it's, if you stayed on the first photo, Greg, what I'd like to point out is to the west of this property is Grandview, I think I'm saying that right, Grandview Cemetery, and there is Atlanta bus stop, which you can see in my first photo. Uh, it, it, there's a little sign there, I believe that's where it is, I can only imagine that's where it is because we have some correspondence from Atlanta. Uh, that being said, there's a, a grade difference between the yard on our, uh, old farmhouse that's at least two feet or more above the existing grade of the cemetery. Uh, and it's been built up for this wall. And, um, you could see, at least from, I'm not sure what exhibit you're on there, Greg, but the, the, the westernmost photo, you'll be able to see the, a large grade break and the fact that this wall exists. So I, what I, and I'm, what I'm referring to is the township policy of, of not deferring any sidewalk or curbing. Um, and, and the fact that they're no longer to be granted. Uh, yeah, that photo right there, Greg, where you can see the speed limit sign of 45, you'll also notice there's a Lanta sign underneath that. I can only assume that's the bus stop because I don't know where the bus stop is on that road, although I, I live right off Walbert Avenue myself. Um, but you'll do, you, you will notice a significant grade change with my retaining wall on the right-hand side of that photo to the Grandview Cemetery parcel on the left. Uh, and I'm not, I'm not saying that wall's 100 years old, but I know it's a lot older probably than I am. And, and, uh, you know, we have a significant amount of improvements to try to get this property down to existing grade, removal of a wall that's absolutely sound and, uh, and add sidewalk to this property and/or curbing. Not to mention, I would then have to construct another retaining wall closer to the home because the home itself sits up so much higher than Walbert Avenue. Uh, and there's steps actually that go higher than this retaining wall to get into the home. And if you're talking a five-foot sidewalk that meets side, uh, uh, South Whitehall standards, we're talking about really taking away a significant portion of the frontage and, and almost up to the patio on this house in terms of improvements. And I'm not saying it's not warranted on Walbert Avenue at some point in time. I think if someone came in and wanted to make this beautiful old home a doctor's office or a dentist's office or an accounting firm or even knock it down and rebuild something, I think at the time that that happens, it would be more appropriate. Uh, at, at this point, you know, to draw a line on a piece of paper that, that, that takes the commercial property off the front and puts residential use in the back is probably not the appropriate time to put in improvements on Walbert Avenue. And I'll go back to the previous submissions with asylum equities, uh, uh, the previous 10-unit subdivision. This wasn't even a comment on that previous subdivision and we were adding, we were adding 10 units to the rear of this, this farm, uh, farmhouse. Um, and then it wasn't, it wasn't even brought up, I have a September, uh, you know, 2019 review letter from South Whitehall and, and it was not an issue at that point, so it was certainly something we didn't anticipate coming into this basic lot line adjustment minor subdivision plan. So I'd like to open it up, uh, to the, to the Planning Commission here to discuss it. Uh, and, and Greg, I think it's maybe the last photo that shows that this wall runs all the way to the telephone pole at the eastern edge of our property and that actually makes a 90-degree turn back towards the property line on this property. Excuse me. Um, which, actually, we run into more problems with the idea of even considering it because I would then incur grading on another person's property and the removal of the utility pole uh, for this property, and it's not that one, Greg, it would be the third one, we're getting close. Uh, but, and when we get to that photo, you'll see right at the very end of our wall is a PPL telephone pole, I'm assuming it's PPL, it could be anybody's utility pole, uh, but for, on, that, that's, that does show it there where the wall makes a 90-degree, uh, bend towards the, to, to, so what you're looking at there is, this is the, the portion of our property, the Sam property and the property to our east. And, and that's where our wall ends. And, uh, that pole right there and any grading we would do for a, for a sidewalk or curbing, you know, we'd almost be encroaching on the neighbor's property at that point.
That's right-of-way, that's right-of-way then, right?
Uh, it is, I have researched what's been dedicated, not dedicated, I'm assuming it's in the PennDOT right-of-way. I don't know what the neighbor has.
That, that's right-of-way, I'm not sure if that's.
I mean, if you took back the ultimate right-of-way on this, we'd be in through the existing building. At least through half of the building.
Yeah, you're, you're correct, the neighbor, the neighbor, um, appears to have done the full dedication right-of-way because it, it appears that the right-of-way goes through their house too.
Uh, at least on our plan.
Yeah.
At least through the porch, uh, for that.
It looks like the work would be done on the right-of-way.
Okay. So is that what you want to do?
Well, what I want to discuss is the need, uh, or, or I would say our lack of, uh, desire to rip out that retaining wall uh, the way it sits there today and take out, my gosh, a good three feet or more of material and then go towards the porch of our home by a good eight feet, which probably take us up to our first step, if not close, and then have to build another wall with a series of steps that go up.
Would, would a wall be necessary, what, did you say it's a two-foot drop over? What's that entire width from the wall to the front porch?
Yeah, that wall's, well, that wall's, that wall on Walbert Avenue is an easy 24 inches. And then as you go back towards the house, you have another couple of steps up to the front porch of that house, the front door is probably another three feet higher.
The, the house to the east, immediately to the east, um, the, the grass looks pretty level with, um, the road.
Yeah, they didn't have, yeah, they didn't have a retain.
Yeah, it just looks like they, they built up the earth there unnecessarily. It looks like it could be brought back down like the house immediately to the east. I, I, I guess, you know, the real question is, you know, taking that wall down versus doing the sidewalk, from an engineering aspect, it's doable to put the sidewalk, I believe.
I'm not saying it's not doable, I just think the appropriate time to do it would be at a proposed construction of a, of a commercial use there. What you have there now is a residential use of somebody lives in that home. And we're not proposing any other change to that right now.
And I know with, there, there's a large development right down the block, um, pedestrian mobility is important, um.
Yeah, if they'd like to do it for us, I guess they could, but I don't necessarily see how the burden falls on the property owner in this case to make
Right?
Yeah, it's a lot line adjustment, I mean, it's about the most benign, benign adjustment we can figure out here, I mean, it's just one line on a plan. I understand the need for curbing and sidewalk on Walbert Avenue. To date, the only one that's done it is Dollar General, and that's because they're new. We didn't do it to, and for, don't forget, I'm on the zoning board at South Whitehall. We didn't do it for the foot doctor down the road back in 2015 or 16, and that was a brand-new building. He didn't do a lot line adjustment, I mean, he built the brand
That doesn't have anything to do with this project.
I understand that everything is different, I'm just saying, you know, I, I understand the need for it, I do, I just don't think that catalyst in this case is correct, I think the catalyst would be if someone comes in for a commercial use and goes to the township with a land development plan, they, they ought to be know, they ought to be, they well aware that they're going to end up curbing and sidewalking Walbert Avenue.
That means, no.
All right, how about if, um, do, do you have a plan with, what we've done, um, we're, we're not going to waive it, we, we can defer it.
Yes, I understand that, and I, I, and I absolutely agree with it, deferment in this case.
And, and what we also, um, have required is a, a plan. You know, draw it.
Draw it.
Engineering plan, what would be done so that
Okay.
And, and, um, so that, that's an alternative, that, that would be to require a decision by the Planning Commission that we can talk about it, does that make sense?
If you're asking me that question, if you want us to show you on paper what curbing and sidewalk would look there, like there, uh, I could show it. I, I would hope for a township review that would be indicative of what we're trying to do here, which is defer it because it's going to be engineered at a later date. So I can show some grading and I can show a sidewalk and I could show some curbing and I could show how it affects the existing home. But since we don't know what happens in the future, what I don't want to do is submit it for a full, uh, review. You know, at the expense of our client and firm because I don't necessarily know that's what it's going to look like in the future depending on what comes in here next, some guy might buy three properties in a row, but I'd certainly be willing to show it on paper with some minor grading to show you what it would look like and how it would affect the current situation if a deferment was in place.
Okay, um, all right, that, let's keep that, um, open right now unless, are there any comments from the Planning Commission? On this?
I just think it's always good to remove a fixed object from the right-of-way. Uh, if a pedestrian wants to use that bus and wants to go east, how do they do it? And not, not even that, you're putting even a sidewalk in just makes it, connects another segment of sidewalk, and there's other spots along Walbert, there's, uh, down a block or two, A B Veterinary Hospital, they have sidewalk right at the edge of the curb, or red, edge of the car.
That's down by the Dollar General, yeah.
Yeah, but right in front of the A B Vet, it doesn't connect to anything. You know, it's, it's set alone, but this would connect to an existing sidewalk. You connect to that sidewalk, it goes all the way to the Parkland Library when it's, you know, renovated and back open. So that, that's
And again, I understand the benefit of it. Um, I, I just think that the timing is wrong and I think that whatever, uh, uh, the, the subsequent owner of this property is going to be on the line for it when they decide to use this for commercial use. Uh, I think it completely makes sense.
Right, and then the next though.
The township, it might be better to put it in now than a future date that may never come. So that's the other, of the story.
We have something that has an opportunity to get done now. If the, and then, you know, if it never gets sold, then, or it never gets developed and it's kept at the same use, then it's, if we have an existing condition, uh, you know, it's not preferred existing condition. And then the, the, the alternative is the project, uh, the property gets sold, an ex-owner doesn't realize or doesn't do his due diligence and then we decide to call in the, uh, deferral. And then he's angry at us, or he or she's angry at us. I mean, we're on a big, uh, thing of, it's got to be a really solid argument not to put this in, in my opinion. Uh, sidewalks, uh, are key to the health of the community, especially when there's Atlanta bus stop right there. And you have a speed limit that's 45 to 35 right at that, that segment there, a roadway.
But I'm in the engineering business, I understand planning, I understand, uh, uh, you know, the, the use of sidewalks on the state highway. But to adding 102 feet of sidewalk to a piece of grass where someone's going to have to walk back out on Walbert Avenue, I, I get it, you have to do it at some point with these properties, I just think the time to do it is when there's a proposed use. Not, not when you have an existing condition, at this point not, not when you have an existing condition. At this point, nothing changes on this property. But if someone wants to come in and use this property for commercial use, the odds are they're going to have to come to land development. And when they come to land development, that's the appropriate time when there's, when there's uh, improvements planned that this would become part of those improvements.
Once again, that's from your perspective as the, on the private developer side, but from the township's side, the, the aspects of safety and having a sidewalk there now opposed to potentially 10 years from now or never, um, it would be good to have the sidewalk.
And you know what? That would, that would make, that would make complete sense to me if they had asked for it back in September of 19. They didn't ask for it then when we were proposing 11 units plus the existing house of 12 units. I mean, it wasn't, it wasn't even a comment then. It wasn't even a comment. It wasn't a deferral. We didn't even defer it.
Did they ask, they asked for the waiver of it? Just because they didn't ask doesn't mean that we weren't going to require it.
I don't even see the comment in any of the letters going back to July of 19.
If it's in the SALDO and your, a client doesn't ask for a waiver or a deferral, that doesn't mean that it doesn't have to get done. And we were far from getting that, a plan approved.
No, I understand that. We were do, we were proposing sidewalk on the interior roadway, uh, to the, for the 10-unit, uh, you know, five flats to the, to the north.
And that doesn't have any weight anyways in terms of what we're talking about now.
No, I understand. I'm just saying that the idea of curb and sidewalk on Walbert Avenue on the farmhouse portion or the commercial portion of it wasn't brought up then. Uh, I certainly didn't expect it to be brought up on a, on a lot line adjustment, uh, considering at the, at this point in time, there's really nothing more than we're, we're giving a neighbor to the rear more land.
My, my opinion is if, if, if it's in our SALDO, it's not necessarily up to the township to identify all the deficiencies in a plan that was submitted. We were working through that process and then it never returned. You don't know if we would have brought it up at a later date. It's in our SALDO. If a client is conditioned of it, that it has to go in there. You're, you're well aware of that.
I, I'm very, I'm well aware of it. All I'm, all I'm saying is at this time, it would be appropriate for us to either ask for a waiver from that requirement or a deferral, and that's why I want to discuss it. I don't see that there's any other comments on any other review letters or anything that we have an issue with. In fact, again, like I've said, I've made all the revisions uh, to this plan and, and are ready to resubmit it. Uh, I didn't want to do so until we've had this conversation about sidewalk and curbing.
So you, you could show where it's going to be, like if, if we defer it, we would ask, like Chairman McNair said, we would ask for it, it to be engineered and shown where it's going to be. That at least puts the next owner, if there is a next owner, on notice if they do their due diligence with their legal work that this needs to happen if they want to convert to use.
That makes complete sense.
I mean, it's, it's, you're correct. It's been there forever, as, as long as any of us have been alive, but there's also an aspect of, you know, removing fixed objects from the roadway from the right of way. So I, I go back and forth, so I'm curious what our other commissioners have to say. Thank you.
I do want to point out that, um, excuse me. If we do get a deferral from this, even if a commercial use comes in that does not rise to the level of land development, we can still call in the deferral at that point.
Because they would have to go through, uh, a permitting process, right?
Yeah, exactly.
Okay. And then that, that, you know, they might, it's not, they might not see that coming, but at least we have it documented.
Yeah, and, and certainly with the subdivision plan, if they are doing their due diligence, the sidewalk would be shown on the subdivision plan. Um, so, you know, just take a look at the property. There's no sidewalk there, but it's shown on the plan. I know people don't look at it all the time, but it's, it's hard to get out.
Put big letters on there, deferred.
Yeah.
And then, and then also it puts the, uh, properties to the east on notice as well that
Yeah.
there's stuff planned, so they can't say what, if they're doing their due, due diligence, looking at, you know, the neighboring properties, they know that's, you know,
It's common.
It's, the hardest thing we have is we try to do it at the upfront because calling in deferrals, as George and the staff can attest, it's a, it's like pulling teeth without an, an aesthetic. So it's, if people don't like to do it, and sometimes we try to do it right up to the upfront. I could see the case on both sides on this one.
I, I absolutely can. I mean, I, I, and, you know, again, it's not the first time I've run into it. I, and, and of course, you know, in Dollar General's case, it made sense. And even at the veterinarian, I think it made sense. There, they were, they were newer developments that, that had improvements involved. And probably should have been done at the, at the foot doctor, too, unless it got deferred. Um, but, you know, I'd like to see all of Walbert Ave. I mean, the, the problem with Walbert Avenue is they come into zoning, uh, and, and front of you guys all the time, it, there's not a lot of room to work in terms of what's commercial and what's residential. So so generally speaking, they always have to come in to either zoning or, or for land development. Uh, there's not a lot of buildings that are just ready to go. So I, I think that you'll see this property in the future. I don't know when, and when you do, I think that's the appropriate time, and I'll put it on the plan, and I'm making big dark, dark letters that the, the sidewalk's been deferred, but we have it on there. I'll engineer it and give it to your, give it to your engineer for review.
Any other comments from the planning commission?
Yes. Oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I had one question. Is that utility pole on your property or on neighboring property?
My guess is it's on the neighbor's property. I don't know for sure, um, I mean, it's, it's really close, really close.
It could be right on the property line, too.
It could be right on the property line. If you, if you zoom in there, my bold, my bold, uh, southerly line, uh, even though that the wall ends, I think, a little bit before the, the, the pole, the, the line is very, very close.
Yeah.
And actually both poles. Uh, there's one on, on, one on each, uh, property line on Walbert Avenue, so, um, it's hard to draw.
Okay. All right, Diane?
Uh, thank you, Bill. Um, so I wanted to, uh, thank, uh, both Brian and David for bringing up some excellent points on this. Um, I certainly do uh, fall on the side of not granting waivers typically for sidewalk. Um, but in this particular case, since there is no development being done at all, we're doing a lot line adjustment or property line adjustment. You know, it's not in conjunction with a land development plan, so I, I would agree that a waiver, um, is indicated in this particular case, as long as it's shown on the plan, uh, for the reasons given for future use. Um, if the land is ever sold to somebody else for improvements, um, so that would be my comment. Thank you.
I'll go one step further and, and I'll, I'll say it's a deferral, and we can add a note on this plan uh, under general notes that any future land development on Lot 1 will be subject to, uh, at the very least sidewalk. I'm not so sure about curbing. Uh, to put that language in there, that's kind of up the PennDOT, too, but, um, I'd certainly put on there that, uh, Lot 1 would be subject to a deferral of sidewalk.
I'm willing to support the deferral.
Al, any comment?
Uh, no, I, I, I just feel that, uh, doing much more than showing it on the plan, in other words, uh, deferring it, not waiving it would be, uh, I suspect a large burden to put on the, uh, property owner just because he's, he's a lot line.
Okay, um, the comment said, I think there are some comments or some questions, comments?
There are two, Mr. Chair, and first is Dennis Gibbiser. Dennis, if you're there, uh, unmute and please ask your question.
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes. Hello, can you hear me? Yes. Uh, my name is Dennis Gibbiser. Um, my property actually abuts both properties that have been proposed. Um, some of you may be familiar with me. Um, I would like to say that I do not speak on behalf of everyone. Yes, sir.
Could, could you give your address?
Sure. My address is 1640 North Filbert Street. So I'm directly south of Gene LaGath property, property and directly east of the proposed properties. Um, again, I, I'm, I'm a neighbor and, um, I by no means speak on behalf of all neighbors, but I would like to say that the proposed plan that has been shown tonight will be, uh, it'll be greatly appreciated by many neighbors who live in Fernwood. Um, if this was to go through and the sale was to go to Mr. Gene LaGath, there are many people within Fernwood who will be very, very delighted by it. Um, I know the curbing on Walbert will go along with no matter what development that goes on, and, and I'll leave that to the zoning board to handle. But I'd just like to let everyone know that from a citizen point of view, that the people who live in Fernwood would be very delighted to hear this if it went through. That's all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Uh, next, Mr. Chairman's Jackie Smith. Um, do not have an address, so Jackie, you can go ahead and unmute. Ask your question. Please provide your, your address. There's Jackie Smith there. I see her, I see her name in the room, but she's not sure. She's having trouble unmuting. Um, she did-
Ritter it.
I'll go ahead and read.
Address, yeah.
She did provide her address. I'll just read her, uh, comment for the record. Realize just because something is the right of way doesn't mean it's, it is right to take it away.
Okay.
Uh, and that's all I have in the chat box. Anybody on the phone? Wish to make a comment? Now would be the time. Go ahead and unmute. Uh, I don't see anything, Mr. Chairman, so I think we're good to go at this point.
Okay, um, based on the comments, did, I, I, I think it, it was closed, but I think saying, uh, the planning commission would, and I know there's reservations. I, I've gone both ways on this myself, uh, uh, would go with a deferral, uh, if, if we get the, uh, plans marked on the drawing, the, 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 the resolution when it's appropriate to do. I, I guess i- if we do that, and I, we might have to make a, make a motion, Nud. What about, are there other pieces of it? The, um, uh, I guess the property, um, right of way, property, deeding, or is, is that, you're all right? Is that all right? We'll, we'll keep that in there now. I think that-
Uh, is there a specific comment? The, is that under zoning 50-foot ultimate right of way from centerline maybe required?
Greg, which I, I think it was, um, is that it?
Yeah, I, I believe that would cover it. It, it's also a SALDO requirement. We generally ask for right-of-way dedication at these sort of things. Um, now, understanding that obviously ultimate right-of-way takes it right through the house. So I, I've seen the, the right-of-way lines be reduced. I've seen them actually go around the house.
The structure, yeah.
Yeah, the, this lot in particular is, has the closest property line to Walbert Avenue of everything along those blocks, uh, at least on the north side. Um, so you know, there, there's the possibility they're getting additional right-of-way, at least to some degree. You know, to provide more right-of-way for public improvements in the future. And since this is a lot line adjustment, that's just a line on the paper. So the question is, would you be looking for a, a deferral of that as well, or?
Well, I, I certainly think at, at this point, we'd be willing to defer it until time of, of construction. I do notice, you know, the ultimate right of way goes literally right through half of the structure. Um, and rather than try to wrap it around that structure, uh, like we did sort of up at, on, uh, Walbert Avenue for Hills at Winchester with the one, a couple of structures that are there, um, I mean, would deferring it at a later date, if someone wants to tear that structure down, be the time to do it? You, you know what I mean? If they decide to go in the back with a structure and then put parking in the front, um, obviously then that would be the time to do it. I, I guess what I'm worried about is if someone wants to to, uh, renovate that structure, uh, that it's not encumbered by the right-of-way line.
Right, right. And I, like I say, generally speaking, we, we don't want the right-of-way line to go through the structure. So either you can do, as you mentioned, like we did up in, um, Hills at Winchester of drawing the line until it hits the house and then, you know, putting the line around the house, um,
Then you can get it back at a later date?
What was that?
And then you can, you can get that back at a later date, then?
Uh, once the house comes down, yeah.
Right, okay. Well, we can do that. We can, I guess we could wrap it around the house as, as, uh, as seemed fit. Um, we don't, I, yeah, I just worry about, uh, you know, at this point, this, this point in time, I don't know what, what's going to happen down the road, but yeah, I think we'll do something similar to what you saw on Hills of Winchester and, and we'll draw that up for our revision.
Okay. Yeah, and then i- in essence, that would be a deferral of the right-of-way dedication, um, to the extent shown on the plan.
All right.
So if the house does come down at some point in the future, we can call that the remainder of it in. But we won't do that until, you know, we, we don't want to take down a house for right-of-way.
I understand. That's, that's fair. I agree, and we'll, we'll, we'll go with that.
Is that acceptable?
That's an acceptable condition that we, uh, as a condition, uh, that we, uh, show the ultimate right of way, um, on our plan at 50 feet, um, to a point of the existing dwelling where we will wrap the, uh, right of way around the existing dwelling as to not uh, conflict with that dwelling.
Okay.
Okay, um, would that mean then that that would be just shown on a drawing that wouldn't be, would it, would all the, the, the deeding, et cetera, would not be done now?
Um, the deeding would be done to the extent shown, but it would also obviously be shown on the plan as well.
Okay.
Hey Greg, that would be a partial deferral, right?
Yep, that would be a partial deferral.
All right, um, any, any, anybody else on the planning commission have any comments on the, the right-of-way deferral? Um, okay. A- any other? So now do we want to, so what needs to happen now? We, we need to get these, um, property lines set and, and, and this plan set?
Yeah, I, I think on my end, we're going to come back to the revised plan. I'm going to come back to the revised plan. It shows, um, change to the right-of-way, ultimate right-of-way and some, uh, depiction of sidewalk on Walbert Avenue. Um, and the, I, and I'm going to denote it in one of the notes on our plan under general notes, and I'll put some sort of notation to that. It's sidewalk illustration that it's deferred, uh, at, at this time, and to see note, whatever note it ends up being, uh, on the plan. And they can, someone can refer to that note and see that that sidewalk's deferred to the next time land development's proposed.
Okay. And, and Mark, what I would request is, once you do that, uh, draw up a formal, uh, waiver-deferral request letter.
Formal waiver, yep, waiver-deferral request letter.
Yeah. And then we can do a formal vote on it next time and, and make it all official.
Very good. Um, and I guess the only thing I can see that's left would be if there was a need for street trees on Walbert Avenue, but as you can probably see from those photos, there, there are a couple of existing trees, and the only other place where a street tree would be up at Roosevelt Street, and that's our only, uh, entrance into the site. So and outside like that, I said to you before, the site is treed, uh, just about the entire border. So I, that, that was, I'm sorry, just part of Greg's, uh, comments. Uh, number three, I don't even know, you know, if you just want us to, uh, three, I don't even know, you know, if you just want us to uh address it in our in our response letter that we weren't uh weren't considering any street tree, a new street tree uh placement.
Uh, yeah, that that would be, if you're looking for a deferral of that, that would also be included in your uh formal letter.
Okay, deferral, okay. Outside of that, I'm good.
All right, so we we've got, you've got a direction and we'll we'll take it up the next time when you come back with the revised plan.
Absolutely.
Uh, one, one more bit of uh business. Um, since it looks like we are taking this under advisement, I would need to know if you're willing to sign a waiver from the uh time limitation to review the plan.
Absolutely.
Very good.
If you email it to me, Greg, I'll get you that signed.
Will do.
Uh, motion to take this under advisement? Let's see, Diane and Al, okay. And roll call vote?
David Dunbar.
Hi.
Brian, hi.
Hi.
Diane Kelly.
Hi.
Bill McNair.
Hi.
Alan Tope.
Hi.
David Wilson.
Hi.
Motion passes six to zero.
Okay.
Okay, thank you very much. All have a very good and safe night.
Okay, you too.
Thank you.
Bye bye.
Thank you.
Okay, um. And as I said earlier, the Blue Barn Road subdivision plan has been removed from the agenda, so we are on to agenda item number five, which is a transportation infrastructure update. Tony?
I'm here to say thank you. Um, what I have for you is Pendot came out with a proposed District Five delivery schedule, so um we took a look through that. There are five things within South Whitehall Township that is uh that will be let in the next year, two thousand twenty-one, let meaning being put up for bid. So resurfacing Austin Dell Road from Moore's Road to Route three oh nine uh and turn the bid uh February eleventh, twenty twenty-one. Resurfacing twenty-two from fifteenth to MacArthur. Bid for eight twenty-one, resurfacing of three oh nine, lead date six one twenty-one. Three oh nine and Tillman interchange, lead date of nine thirty twenty-one, and resurfacing Cedar Crest Boulevard, Walbert to Monchon, uh, lead date of Christmas twenty twenty-one. So those are projects that Pendot is looking to uh get bid in uh in the coming year and hopefully uh start work shortly after.
I don't, I don't, I was gonna say, I don't mean to confuse this. Um, I was looking at, and maybe Brian can shed some insight, but I was looking at the tip website the other day in response to um the township, township manager inquiry and the 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 resurface and or betterment project for three oh nine that runs from basically Walbert up to Orfield. That looks like on the Pendot website, it's been pushed out to twenty twenty-four and then with construction not till twenty twenty-nine. Did you, have you heard anything on that, Brian?
Right now, it's supposed to be a resurfacing and then the betterment coming later for like.
Okay, so so they split it, and so they're keeping it as a resurface first, and then so the betterment's pushed out to twenty twenty-nine.
Right.
Okay.
Just because of funding and who knows.
The website doesn't make that distinction, which is.
Right. The the question I had about the Cedar Crest resurfacing from Walbert to Monchon is how does that balance with the Ridge Farm section of Cedar Crest from Walbert to Huckleberry? Is it, so?
No, women, you mean?
Yeah, are they aware? Yeah, sometimes Pendot, certain departments are aware and other departments aren't that you would hate to repave it and then dig it up again.
That makes sense. I mean, I think uh they just submitted to Pendot, so it might take some time to kind of cycle through there, knowing that they uh.
So it, you know, if Pendot would decide to just do Huckleberry to Monchon and then leave the rest, that would probably be a better utilization of funds. So that's just, you never know with Pendot. I've learned that.
Is there a coordination that happens? I recall at a, we had a planning commission pizza and planning um that Pendot had come to one of the meetings and talked about working with municipalities on the front end as projects are being brought forth in the township to coordinate with Pendot. Is that something that we're actively doing with Ridge Farm to coordinate with?
Pendot connects and uh everybody gets invited, so I'm sure George gets notices about it.
Yeah, of course, throws out when we get them for sure.
Thank you.
They have done that to pay us with uh three oh nine a couple of times, because I've attended some of those.
I I forget the year Brian knows, but if it was engineered prior to the official start date of Pendot connects, they don't have to do it. They typically don't. But if it's a new project passed, whatever that date was, Pendot connects. Yeah.
But anything now in the pipeline is connectable.
Yeah.
All right, well, that's my report. That's uh what's new with Pendot. I think you should start to see in the next month. I think the paving deadline for Pendot is uh November. So we should, Pendot paving should be wrapping up shortly.
Did that, did that list say anything about the variable message boards that are supposed to go on three oh nine in front of best line?
Uh, does not, four resurfacings and then the interchange.
Yeah, I'll I'll check in on that and I'll let you know when I'm at work.
Is that coming out of their safety line item?
Yeah, it's supposed to basically tell people, well, it's a variable message board. It's supposed to go right in front of best line to basically tell people if the turnpike is closed like it was this morning or, you know, stuff is going on I seven gate or something like that.
Yeah, I'm so I'm thinking it's probably not in the project list because they use that different funding source for those safety things, and it might be in one of those.
I think it's a uh variable message board line item. They're they're putting them in a lot of places, but I know the one South Way Hall is right on three oh nine there. Thank you.
Okay.
I know one thing on transportation, interestingly enough. Um, uh, the Turnpike Commission contacted me because they are looking to um replace the Tillman Street Bridge over the turnpike um in the near future. Um, so that's coming up. They they will have a small BMP that they'll be doing. There will be a small widening mainly on the north side. But uh that'll be a replacement. It'll be done over two construction seasons. They'll start with, I believe, the north side first and then the south side uh over two seasons. Uh, but that is coming down the pike uh in the next year or so.
Hey Brian, how come that's not an RBR? Is is no staging area?
RBR?
A rapid, how come that's not a rapid bridge replacement? How come it's a two-year project versus just slipping it in?
They've stopped that project. They stopped RBR. Yeah.
Well, I mean, Pendot's got the, well, I I'll talk you off line.
Yeah, the turnpike is a different animal, but the Pendot stopped the RBRs and then the turnpike does RBR like that, like they did at Cracker Sport and that, like they did at near the Alpo facility when they just literally can't close a lane, since this isn't the turnpike cartway. It's above the turnpike. They can do it in a different way. So we'll talk more.
Okay. All right, anything else on transportation? We will move on to the comprehensive plan update and uh turn it over to Dave Manhart to review uh where we're going with it. And I, as I said, I would also like to talk about the um where we're gonna do stuff that the, I guess, a phase that's just been done to see how that fits with zoning requests. Dave?
Yeah, um, just trying to get everything set up here. Can everybody hear me? It sounds like it.
Yeah.
Um, as far as the where, I have a little slide where we kind of go over that and maybe we can kind of talk about zoning requests and um how to look those up and get some information related to that where. But as I said before at the intro, you know, we're starting the how should we grow portion of the comp plan update. And that involves the survey. We'll introduce that survey and then also the, we'll talk a little bit more about phase four um where we're looking to get more involvement from Planning Commission in focus areas. So that's kind of what I'll talk about tonight. Um, here's the slide that we've seen almost at every presentation. Um, we're in that phase three. Kind of in between that evaluating projected build outs and scenario selection. We're really looking at how projected growth, how the public would like that growth to look. Um, the previous phase, we were looking at where the public thought that growth would be most appropriate. Um, now we're asking, what should it look like? Um, and then the next phase after that is the subcommittee phase, and I'll get into that a little bit more. So here's the map we used for the where should we grow exercise. The grids that are highlighted were indicated for some sort of growth. If it doesn't have a highlight, there weren't, it wasn't indicated for growth. Um, it limited or no growth. And then we categorized the different growth categories by employment or population. The text reflects the population on the top and then the employment growth on the bottom. So there's a bunch of different um combinations between greenfield, infill redevelopment, so the development types, um, and then different categories of growth for both population and employment. And as far as the, and then the, we also have the um protect stickers and the thick stickers. Um, so this gives you an in- indication of what the public was through those um outreach efforts and those sessions, what the public wanted us to focus on, um, where we wanted to direct growth and what intensity or intensity of growth would be. So I think this is probably as far as the where should we grow as it relates to any zoning requests, um, rezoning requests. Um, we could look at where that zoning request is and what the public thought was most appropriate for that hex. Can give you a little bit of guidance of of what people were thinking. Um, you know, based on what the request is, you know, if it's a you know, a high employment generator and the hex is a no employment groove, then you would know that's not consistent. But again, it's kind of there's a lot of things that may be recommended for the zone zoning update. After we get through the next phase, that would inform any zone changes um better. So I mean, it, at this point, it gives you an idea of what people were hoping to get to see in that area, um, but it doesn't, doesn't give you, you know, a lot of detail of what that growth should look.
Hi, Dave. Would would there be any way we could sort of like should provide a graphic that shows the project locations in question that we're asking for zoning?
Yeah.
Overlaid onto this?
We could. Um, what you can do is, what I'd recommend is going to, if you want to do it on your own. You can go to the story map and I can actually hop pop on that real quick.
There's three that I guess if we could look at, I'd like to see where they, where they are, where, how they fit here.
So this is the story map that I worked on, um, that presents all the results from that phase. And I'm just gonna scroll down to the the final summary map. So if we have an intersection or an address, um, we can type it in here and it'll zoom to it. Greg, do you have an address or any?
About nine hundred South Hillview.
Yeah, nine hundred.
There you go.
So it appears. Okay, so yeah, that's the one that goes into lower MAC. So this South Whitehall portion is in the hex identified for medium population, medium employment, and a development type of infill. So that gives you kind of a ballpark idea of what the results of that where should we grow are. So again, it gives you an idea, but it's not very specific.
Okay.
And then, yeah, I mean, we can check any locations as long as we have an address or I can scan if I know where it is.
There's two others.
Okay.
I don't know, Greg, the the one who's actually not far from where we were talking about before.
One's on Stone Drift.
No drift and.
Once, yep, Snowdrift and um three oh nine is the intersection. Probably closest. That's Lapsansky.
So, yeah, here's Snowdrift, three oh nine. So somewhere here.
It's actually, it's actually north of that, so the, you go from one hex to another.
So it's in here?
Yep. Yeah, and then, and then that one.
So a portion of it, of that hex, and this is kind of where you know, we purposely kept this general for the portion of it, and then as we get further through the process, we get, you know, we focus it in more. Um, and this is a perfect example of, you know, the property may straddle a boundary. But when we get to like the land use map and that portion of the project, we'll be identifying it, you know, in a lot more more granularly. So this hex was identified for low population, low growth, infill, um, and the hex to the north was identified for no population or no employment.
So if you recall, the proposed use for that was a storage facility, so that might, that may, what they say is that may end up fitting that criteria for low and low, but we we just don't know yet.
Okay, and are you gonna go through how that criteria is developed?
Yeah, yeah. So I mean, it'll be through the com, the rest of the process, yes.
Okay, we we do that. One one more property. Uh, so this one is low. The the other one is on um Walbert. It's actually on the other side of the cemetery that we were just looking at.
Yeah, you can, Dave, you can probably go to two four four nine Walbert and then just scroll west.
Two four.
Gorgeous.
That's right there, right? Yeah.
Yeah, you, yeah, you're basically looking at it. Yeah, now scroll west past that interior road, road network and, yeah, right about there. It's, that's also right on the boundary line.
Between.
Yeah, it looks like somewhere right in there.
Yeah, these two are gonna be um kind of. Kind of, all right. So this hex is a low, low. Infill. And this one is a high medium because this is the one that has Ridge Farm. And during the process, we hadn't had, Ridge Farm wasn't approved yet. So people put. Some of their dots on there to, you know, use up some of their. Population and employment. So again, adjacent hex is a low, low. Bill. The next phase we get into, you know, what do you want? What do people want that to look like? We have the survey kind of hopefully get, get that information out of. Out of everybody. Okay?
Okay.
Again, if anybody wants to look up any specific area, these maps are available through that blog. And there's a handy geo locator to just type in an address and it'll pull it up. This is word of caution. It's a worldwide locator. So sometimes some of the addresses that come up will be, you know, anywhere in the world. So just make sure you pick one for Allentown. Or else you might end up in Germany or something. I'm going to go back to the presentation. So, I mean, that was actually a really good segue into this next phase.
Day real quick, sorry to interrupt. Caller twelve and caller thirteen, could you, could you please mute until you're, until you're ready to ask a question? Okay, sorry, go ahead, Dave.
Yep. So the next phase, we're calling it how should we grow? So we already asked the public to indicate, you know, where. They thought population and employment growth should occur. Now we hope to ask what should it look like? Or how should we grow? And we're going to do this through a visual preference survey. Which includes some photo submissions if people so choose. This is the link to the survey. It is currently live. We have not advertised it yet. We'll probably put the blog. Posts together tomorrow and go ahead and open it up. Our means for distribution are the blog, of course. We'll put links on the township website. We have a postcard which we're going to mail out to. Our utility billing mailing list. Which. I would say gets ninety-five percent of the residents. If not more, because basically everybody gets a refuse bill. So it's, it's a good way to get everybody out there. The postcard has the web address and a QR code. Hopefully people are more familiar with QR codes being that when you go out to a restaurant, they don't hand you the paper anymore. You gotta look it up on your phone. So we're hoping this will be a great way to get people. To actually take the survey. I also have a mailing list of people that have signed up through the blog and email list. I'll send that out. And we've reached out to Parkland Press about putting an ad in with the QR code. To advertise it there as well. We kind of talked about a goal of a thousand responses. And I think it's, it's roughly 10% of the, of that mailing list. Is what we're shooting for. And I guess a question we had was how long we should leave it out there? We, we've gone back and forth as staff on how long it should stay out there. So we, we can discuss that or I can just jump right in and go through the survey real quick.
Okay, we'll go through it and then we can come back to how long.
My, there it is. So this is the landing page for the survey. It's done through ArcGIS. They have a, an application called Survey one, two, three. So all it is, is a series of pictures for each of the development types. So we have a first section is greenfield. There's a picture. You know, if this was located in a greenfield, low population, no employment. Single family dwellings, compact arrangements, central green, open space preservation. And you just click whether we should encourage indifferent or discourage. And there's a series of sixty-seven photos. We've kind of. Tested it with staff and it takes about 10 minutes to go through them all. I'll just collapse it, but here's the infill section. You know, so every photo has a. Scenario and a description. And people just go through and mark. How they feel about each of the photos. Here's a section where you could submit your own photo for what. You would like to see in infill, low population, no employment. If you have something in mind, you can submit it and that gets tracked as well. And then we also have the redevelopment pictures. So that's the survey. It's technically open. So if you guys would like to take it, feel free. We can start that and it'll be. Start to be pushed out tomorrow, starting tomorrow on the blog and then the following week. I think we might be able to have the postcards out by the end of the week. So that's kind of the plan for the survey.
So are you thinking something like a month?
I was thinking at least a month. And you know, it might. It might be dependent on how quick it goes. Like if, if we get. A thousand responses in that first month, then you know, it's great. If we don't get much response out of it in that month, you know, we have to figure out something else and a better way to get it out.
What we were kicking around Bill was the election is in a couple of weeks. So do we? You know, how do we wrap around that? Make sure we don't. People are going to be tied up in that for the next two weeks or so. And then we want to give people time to. Kind of cool down from that before they, then hopefully get into this.
I threw away four political mailers today and I have a feeling that this postcard, we get mixed in with that.
That's what we're afraid of. Yes. We, I tried to use color on it. Yeah.
I have a question. How many times can a person take this? Cause you don't want to juke the numbers either.
We have it set for one. And I believe it uses a cookie.
Okay. So. Is there a Spanish version?
I'm sorry?
Is there a Spanish version?
Ah.
Well, we didn't think of that. Excellent point though.
What was the question?
Is there going to be a Spanish version? We have Spanish speaking individuals that older Span, or you know.
Okay.
That's. Be all inclusive, you know? So.
Yeah. Who did the LVP C use to do the, to translate those? Documents?
I have to look it up.
Fortunately, the survey's not very wordy.
Right.
So.
It's more visual, but.
Yeah, right, right.
Sometimes translator in the website or.
Yeah. I can look into the. Esri I think has that capability. I saw it on something. Whether it was the story maps or the. Survey one, two, three, that has that translator functionality and I, I will certainly look into that.
Because even if the postcard's printed already, and I don't know if it is or not. If they do that QR code, they might log into that and then, you know, they're going to wonder what this is.
Yeah. And then, you know, even if we just put the, you know, a toggle, like a Spanish flag. Or. Or some. Yeah. From that main page. Yep.
Can you get it tied to Google Translate somehow?
Yeah, we'll figure something out.
I just can't play the PDF. I don't know. So, thank you.
They've had a couple of questions. When you said you were going to have a cookie there. So if someone has an iPhone. And they take the survey and then they go on their home computer. So. Is there a way you can do it by address or name? Or I'm not sure if there's a better way to do that because people have multiple devices where.
Yeah. And you know, I've, I've kind of gone back and forth on it. One issue with keeping it. By one. Response is your one response per household potentially. And I think the way it's set up, it's basically one response per device. So somebody could take it on a iPhone and then take it on the desktop as well. And you know, it's kind of hard to. Limit that unless, you know, I, yeah, I don't know how we would. Without going like door to door, doing boat, you know, registrations or something. It'd be pretty hard to do that.
Can you do it per, you said per household or per address?
It would be hard. I'm not actually sure how we would do it that way.
Is there, in, in the form, is there a place to put your address?
There is not. There is not. We wanted to kind of keep it real quick. So that it's just like a quick visual first response to it.
Yeah, my concern was the last line says include the entire family. If you've got a family of five, people may think that that means, you know, a five of you get on your devices and separately. I just think we need to do what we can to try to make it one dwelling. I don't know how you want to.
One per household, one per dwelling, yeah.
Yeah, I mean.
I mean, I. I kind of think it, I'm okay. Well, I see that side of it, but I also see trying to do it as. Because different population, and we talked about this with, you know, our outreach, is trying to get. You know, a full demographic capture. If we limited the household, we're combining all of that, those demographics. So if we're able to allow. The high school age kids to do it. We're getting their input. It's just another side of it.
Does this track where they are originating? What I mean is like. Let's say it gets posted on Reddit and Russia decides to hack our polling.
Bang it, Brian.
Can you geo like? Not fancy, but.
But it, it, you know how it goes by the. The server location you're logging into. So like I took it and I think it said it was from Newark. So it. It's not very.
Pennsylvania, New Jersey, but if it's coming from California.
Right. Right, yeah. Yeah.
Cause everybody needs a hobby and the kids. Being at home during.
Well, in that case, we'll hit the thousand real quick.
But not necessarily get the results we want, so.
Yeah. Are you asking for the name?
No. Nope.
And you don't want to do that?
I mean, we could. We certainly could.
Some people might be hesitant to put their name.
Right.
It's.
I mean, we could do a resident, yes or no. But, I mean, you're relying on human nature and honesty to answer that. So I don't know. I can look into whether, because it's using ArcGIS, there may be some functionality that allows it to. They call it GeoFence. So that. The survey has to be taken within that fence. So if the boundary, if our township boundary is the fence, you have to be in that township boundary to take the survey.
I wouldn't necessarily track it to just our township. Because like I got service electric and my internet goes to Palmerton, you know.
Right.
Like. PD. So you gotta get it. If it's in Pennsylvania, New Jersey, I think that would be.
And, and the other thing, Brian, is I think we are sending the postcard to our business folks as well. So if they're employees who work here, but don't necessarily live here.
Right.
I, you know, I think we want to try and capture some of that as well, can.
I think the two states there and. You know. Just my thoughts.
So George, just to clarify, you're, you're stating that non-South Whitehall residents are. You're hoping they're going to be in this even just because they work here or shouldn't this be the residents, taxpayers of South Whitehall?
I, I mean, I would defer that back to you all, but I would think you'd want, if you're working here, you're spending, you know, eight, nine, 10 hours a day in the community. To me, they, there's, for instance, I live in Allentown, but I obviously work in Southway Hall Township. So I, I, you know, I would like to be. Have the opportunity to take the survey just to, because I care about Southway Hall Township. So, you know, I, I kind of, I don't want to punt back, but I would say, you know, whatever you guys think, but. I know there's a lot of people that work here that don't necessarily live here that are really vested. I mean, if you look at.
In, in.
Some of the business owners probably don't live in the community. You know, they probably come in, but.
And those businesses, those businesses do pay tax to the township. So, I mean, there is. Some stakeholder ground, grounds for being a stakeholder in, in that respect.
No, somebody who works here does pay taxes.
Yep.
Just from the wage tax.
Why don't we want to have the, the address of where it came from?
It just adds another level of. You know, going from making it very easy and quick to, oh, they want my address. I'm not going to take it. Though, I mean, that's kind of the balancing act with it. If there's too many questions and it takes too long, typically people won't fill out a survey. But what I, I think might be available, and I'm going to look into it tomorrow, is. Leveraging some of the GIS functionality. You know, whether it's a, put a pin on the map of where you live or where you work. And maybe that's the way to do it. So I'll, I'll look into that part of it for sure.
Is there also, is there a mobile version and a desktop version?
It's the same, it's responsive. So it does come up on the phone.
Okay.
It's actually pretty very clean on the phone.
Yes, okay.
Which is good.
Sometimes you get a website on the phone and you're like, wow.
Oh yeah, yeah. We checked that.
And for someone who doesn't have a smartphone and the capability to scan that, so they're gonna need to type in that survey address, or is there a way to make a an easier address that'll link to that?
That is their they truncate it. So that's like, that is the short version. The long version is, you know, we'd never be able to type it in.
Would it, would it be possible? And I don't know if this is even possible. I look at that and I'm like, what does this have to do with Southway Hall? If we had it southwayhall.com/survey and redirect.
Right. Right.
Use it some credibility that it's from Southway Hall, not some organization that's trying to do something.
Yep. Yeah, we will have the logo on the front. But yeah, that was.
That's something I think ease of access, you know, Brian, I think you're onto something. And that's why I asked the question. That's an awful lot of digits and letters and, you know, hashtag type in. And I just feel some residents probably aren't going to go through that, or if they type in, you know, a wrong letter, they're going to get frustrated and walk away. So is there a way to make it cleaner? So someone who does not have the ability to scan that can just go to a very simple address, even if we redirect it to this one?
Yeah, I mean, we can do, I could make a landing page either with the blog or the webs, well, the website addresses are not clean. The cleanest spot to do it is probably through the blog. So it would be swtcomplan.org/. I think I can get it to say survey. And then that would be the landing page, and then you could link to, there would be the link directly to that survey. Might be a little cleaner than, you're right, when you look at it, it doesn't make any sense. And if we have it, say, Southway Hall, SWT Com Plan, that'll give another indication that it's Southway Hall.
Yes, if somebody sees, sees dot IS, they're gonna be, what is that? And where is that?
Yep. Yep, you want me to go there?
I want to revisit the address issue. I just think that we need to do what we can do to make sure you know, people that don't live here aren't vested here. I understand you getting a business owner, but I just think if we want a true litmus of what Southway Hall residents and stakeholders prefer in Southway Hall, we have one shot at this survey and we don't have a name or an address or a way to to verify that, then I think we're going to get skewed results.
Yeah.
Yeah.
At a minimum, I can put in a text field that's address. I can put a question, live or work, and then an address, and then that'll allow us to look at the data and see if there's any difference between the people that work here versus the people that live here. And it gives us another measuring stick and another thing to evaluate with. So I think if we put those two at the front of the survey, that'll give us a means to kind of filter through the data that we get. And we can look at it through those different lenses. So I think we can throw, put those two questions, and if I can if I can use the GIS functionality, I'll put that on there. If not, it'll just be the search, the address. And we'll go from there.
Okay, I think the address is good. Could there be some need for follow-up? That you would want that information?
Yeah, maybe if. Yeah, I guess maybe at the end I can put a because if somebody submits a photo, we may want to ask questions about it. So maybe at the end we can put a, you know, submit your email address. So that we can contact them.
We could certainly put a box there that says, you know, maybe we had your permission to contact you, so that people aren't going to be afraid, they're going to get inundated with information that looking.
So just to kind of wrap up the notes. We'll look into a Spanish version. I have figured out something to do with the address. If I can use GIS, that'd be great. If not, it'll just be an address box, a text box. We'll have a live work. And then at the end, we'll have a contact box. Oh, and the address. Blog landing page.
Okay.
And since we're contacting the community, should we also say, would you like to receive further updates on the comp plan so that we can network with the community further? You know, this is the first.
In that contact box, I'll put something about would you like to join our mailing list or something like that? Submit your email for mailing list or blog, something. We'll figure out something to put in there. But yes, that excellent idea.
I want to point out that there are some chat box comments coming in.
Yeah, so mostly from Jackie Smith. They look like they're really good questions. So I don't know if, I don't know, Jack, Jackie, do you want to, you want me to read these? Or do you want to, do you want to ask direct questions today? Is Jackie there?
She said you can read.
I can go ahead and read them. So first, if it is using cookies, how does it prevent private browsers refreshing history and using multiple devices? Is there some sort of identity identity verification as well? So I think that's what we're kind of talking about.
Yeah, and I don't know. I think that's the risk anytime you run an online survey. They certainly do their best. And, you know, going with you know, Survey Monkey's the big one and Esri's another big one. So I'm pretty confident in whatever verification means they're using is going to be some of the best you can get. Without, again, going in and you know, getting an actual location. Pretty confident that it's they'll do their best, but can't avoid any, all of it.
So then it goes on, is there a way to cross-check a given name? If they live in the area, which I think you talked about a little bit, you could have a name field and cross-check it with the repositories of who lives in the area if they mark themselves as a resident.
We could. And that got to the question of whether we wanted it putting too many questions on there and sometimes people you know, get turned off taking a survey if it's, if they're asking for too much information. So that was a kind of one of the balancing act decisions that we tried to make as a staff.
Yeah, I kind of think you have to have identification.
Do you think we should have a name or address would be fine?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't, I agree. What's the harm in asking for a name and address? We're asking for a survey of Southway Hall residents and if they're going to take a 10-minute survey, it'll take them 30 seconds to write down their name and address.
Yep.
Next looks a little bit more like a statement, the cleaner link name redirect idea is much nicer. And then I suggest putting the verification information at the end with the address and name because it will not deter people if they have already gone through the work of entering the survey. Which is.
Jackie, sneaky.
Pretty good idea, yeah. And then Carl Mabry just entered, can you verify residency through public records where they have to sign up and get a verification code to take the survey?
I don't know. I mean, it adds another level. And I think it just, again, that balancing act of making it easy and too much work is where that would come in. But I think if we have the address and a name, that at least gives us that ability to filter through the data. And I think that'll because once we have the data in, we can, and we have that information, we can filter it out however we want and hopefully pull, you know, good information related to, you know, if we have address, we can relate it to locations in the township. You know, if there's any different preferences based on where they live, might be an interesting thing to see.
And then another one from David Burke, why not limit the how we should grow question to actual property owners, personal and business? What is the benefit to township, the township taxpayer surveying people who merely work here eight hours a day? Are they really stakeholders? So that's part of the section, I think we have with the planning commission.
Well, I think that's a good question because when we talk about zoning and development, you know, the impacts go to infrastructure, our emergency services, whether, you know, for schools, the things that really do impact the people who are taxpayers, whether that's a business or homeowner.
That means I can't take it.
Well, I mean, you could take it where you live in your town.
Yeah, no, others will.
Because I think there's some merit to that. I made, I voiced that earlier in the comments tonight because I understand when you know, the discussion about wanting to reach the high schoolers. You know, unless we're going to make this survey weighted with, with dollars, you know, if you want this, it's going to mean this. You know, if you want these kind of developments, it might mean a tax increase of X or whatever. You know, it's difficult because we're limited just looking at visual preferences. You know, someone might like the way something looks but doesn't understand the ramifications or the implications of what that means for the entire community. So.
Yeah, no, obviously I defer to the planning commission. I just know as a non-resident that I feel very vested in this community. It would, it would wouldn't upset me, but I would feel neglected if I didn't have the ability to have that input. So, but I completely understand.
I think if we have the question, is resident or business, we'll have the data and we'll be able to look at both of them and evaluate it. So I think having that question in there is, is an important one.
You differentiate the business owner who doesn't live here, who is a stakeholder, okay? From the person who marks business and maybe he just works here. I think it's important to obviously include the business owner who may live in Allentown or somewhere else because he's a, he's a taxpayer to a large extent, just like a homeowner here. And I understand that a person who works here may pay some taxes, but it's nowhere near the, the amount that, you know, that people own a home or are a resident here.
Right.
So I don't think you're, you're calling it by the basis of two checkmarks, business or resident really really includes or allows you to, to separate the cases.
We could do three. You know, and that allows us, so if we did business owner, resident, employee or worker or something, then we can actually go in and wait responses by that. And just for example, we could wait it by tax dollars. It gives us that flexibility when we get to the evaluation portion. But I always go back to that balancing act, and I think if it's a three checkboxes, I think we'll probably hit those three main categories of respondents. Yeah. I think that'll help.
I agree. I think that's an improvement.
David, one more comment, one more comment came in on the chat. For those not, I think you kind of talked about this a little bit with the redirect, but for those not tech savvy, seeing this address that are G dot IS backslash.
Yeah.
And that request a name and address, people may be leery to provide information and back out of the survey. So kind of hit that. People don't want to provide personal information of taking a survey as they become conditioned to then getting flooded with email, phone calls, spam, et cetera, and doing so. Link needs to be much cleaner.
Yep. I think using the landing page and, you know, we've also been concerned about you know, if somebody does have a computer but still wants to take it, we'll have some contact information for staff that we could walk them through it. Either over the phone or something. So that information could be on that landing page as well.
Yep, and then another one, Jackie, I agree, phone number and email address should be avoided as verification. Basically suggesting that phone numbers and emails are basically going a little too far.
That's fine. I think name and address is, is to make sure that people live or work here is. Plenty.
Yeah, and you know, I'll put the, the email field can be optional. So if people want to sign up, they can. Wouldn't be a required field.
Okay.
Yeah, you could say if you'd like to be included in future planning meetings, to be, however, we're going to do that. There are people that want to stay informed on this.
Yep. Yep. Excellent. Yes. So I think Diane, you kind of brought up some of the, you know, where we talk about the development types and the how should we grow? You know, what are those fiscal impacts? Is a great segue into the next portion. Whoops, wrong thing is active. Where we start to form those subcommittees. Where this information that we gathered from the how and the where gets funneled into the subcommittees. And we kind of talked about this briefly at the last commission meeting. You know, this is where, you know, planning commission members have an opportunity to get involved in an area of interest. And, you know, kind of roll up the sleeves and get to work on this plan. So this is the screenshot that we've had from the beginning of the subcommittee, subcommittee areas. We went through the comprehensive plan. And on the right, there's a list of whether it's MPC required or in the 2009 plan. So I just kind of went through the chapters. They're not in order. I'll kind of save that for the, the next slide. But some of it is just kind of background information. But some of it is just kind of background information. Like the demographic profile, which we did in that existing conditions report. Statement of goals and objectives will come out of the. Subcommittees or the element groups. In a relationship of clan, plan components and plan consistency are all things that will probably end up handling on, on the staff level. Where we're discussing that and typically those are a couple paragraphs of text or graphics. And then implementation strategies are also requirement from the MPC. And my go to meeting things in the way. Yeah, so implementation strategies that were kind of. Incorporated in the 2009 plan, but not a specific section. So this is the slide where we're really looking at the elements and the subject areas. And chapters. So we're looking at a land use plan. Resource protection plan, housing plan, transportation plan. Community facilities, community utilities plan. So these are all the areas. That will, we kind of envision there being subcommittees for. And that's kind of where the opportunity to get involved and even lead some of these. Subcommittees. That opportunity is there for planning commission members. And then. The next slide, just what do we envision these working groups, you know, what do we envision coming out of there? And what will their tasks be? So each group will be asked to assess the guidelines developed from public outreach. So that refers to. The where should we grow and how should we grow? So they have an understanding of the, that public outreach effort. Review any updated mapping or data. For example, you know, for natural resources, we'll look at flood plains and steep slopes and, you know, the maps will be provided to those working groups. Review the current comp plan for applicable goals, policies, objectives to be carried forward. Recommend new goals, policies, objectives to support those guidelines that they assessed in the beginning. And then also recommend implementation strategies. So this is what we're hoping to get out of each of those element groups and subgroups if need be. And then from there, we put the plan together. One of the things that. See if I can go back real quick. That may cause some timing issues is the land use plan, which kind of should probably come. Once all the. Elements are kind of brought together and implement type tation strategies because some of the plans may. Conflict with the land use plan. So that land use plan subcommittee, I think would probably. Want to look at all the other subcommittees recommendations before. Finalizing that future land use plan. But that, that, that's how we kind of envision that next phase. I know there are questions about it and, you know. When to get involved, that's kind of. That next phase where we see a lot of the involvement. Is everybody excited and ready to roll up their sleeves?
Sure. What, what do you see as the schedule?
So that's kind of. Dependent on the survey. Because we want to get that. Those guidelines prepared. And distributed to the subgroups. And without the survey results, there's nothing, well, there's only half of the picture. That said, we had talked about doing a kickoff meeting. And we kind of still have to assess how we would roll that out in the time of COVID. Where we, we potentially have. A member from each of those groups or a subject matter expert kind of discussing that area. And allow the public to. Kind of. I'm thinking of rooms, so you know, allow the public to go into each of the rooms. And figure out where they want to, you know, volunteer their time. It's how we were thinking of rolling it out, but how we run rooms in this day and age is kind of up in the air. So we're kind of trying to figure out how to do that. But that meeting could be run while the survey's still out. To get everybody lined up and those working groups established prior to the end of that survey. That said, you know, a month to. Two months of November, December timeframe.
It seems like that needs to be. November and December are, are basically here and. I mean, this, it seems to be scheduled. I, I, I am going to ask, we're going to get questions on this. We, we did defer. Three, three development plans. For the comprehensive plan. Now, was that a mistake? Should we have just said that this is going to take a while, so we should just do those independently?
Yes and no. It's a tough one because it, you know, you want to wait, on the one hand, you want to wait and make sure you do something that's going to be. Makes sense for the future of the township. And having all the. Going through the process and having all of that information helps you make a better, more informed decision. That said, you know, we're kind of. Halfway through this process, you have a little bit of indication of what through that, where should we grow? So there may be opportunities to make some, you know, informed decisions based on that information. But again, you know. It's, it's the common planning question, you know, you, you, the looking glass isn't totally clear no matter what we do. So the idea is to try and get as much information in your hands so that you can make those decisions.
Because that's going to come up in the next month or two, I'm pretty sure, in, in some form or other. That we're going to get asked this again. So I, I guess the question I have is, is there a way to say, and you started, you said, well, we have the land use plan. We have the existing one. And. We have the, this, the map that you showed earlier that shows this is the input we got from the community on. Where do we grow? And so could we put those two together and say, this is what that. That brings us to, I guess, another thing, a factor here, the, the MPC requires us to provide. The ability for, for all different types of. Of. Property or functions, I'm not sure what the right word is.
Uses.
Uses.
Yeah.
And. So I guess we have that already is, I don't think, there is, I, I don't think there's any percentage requirement, is there? I, I, that's a question.
That's the, the million dollar question, yeah.
Fair, fair question. Courts, courts use a fair share methodology. But my only thing, I, I would just add to what Dave was saying real quick because. You know, rezonings are in South Whitehall Township are what are, what are called Euclidean in nature. In other words, there's prescribed uses in each zoning district. So when you rezone a property, you are not just rezoning that individual property, you're rezoning every property that has that same designation. To include whatever those new uses would be. Unless it's specific to one lot, of course, but. You know, as, as a general rule, when you're done with the comp plan, you're looking at more of a wholesale thing. My, my hesitation on. Looking at rezoning requests at this point is. Based on the information that we're going to have to go into the stakeholder groups. They may come out and say, we don't want a Euclidean form of zoning going forward. We want to, we want a more what's called a form based form. And so if that happens, anything you do now really becomes. A stopgap or to a certain extent irrelevant because. If you're looking at a forum based approach, you're not really so much concerned about use as you are about design. You know, minimum acreage kind of thing, you know, except that kind of thing. So it's a little bit of a different approach and I just don't know. You know, where this conversation is going to lead until we kind of have results back. Phase three. So I would just say, you can certainly take a look at the three you have on the table, but I would do it. I would do it with the understanding that it may not be that way once we come out of the cop. I guess is what I'm saying.
My hesitation would be. We have three that we're aware of. And maybe there's others that are waiting for this process to go through. To see what happens. If we decide to honor or take a. Or act on these three that we have on the shelf, what others are going to come in? We don't know. I mean, I don't know if staff has had any conversations with anybody that hasn't formally approached a board yet. So it's, it's. You know, landowners always talk to each other and. They're aware that we're in the middle of a comp plan update. It's been publicized. All through the media and, you know, in the, the community. So if we, if we act on these three others, are we going to get more? Before this process is done. That's my only hesitation.
Well, I, I understand that. I, I guess when you start going and the terms are Euclidean and, and form based. You know, you're going to. It's, it's going to take a while to do some of that and, and it's just saying, okay, stop for a while. And I'm not sure that's fair either. We've done that.
No, I, I, yeah, I'm not suggesting that. I'm just, I'm just, just wanting you to. Understand that. It's possible that. The cop plan discussion, which is more of a policy discussion than anything, obviously. So it's really the zoning ordinance, right? At the end that. Is going to drive land use. So, you know, the cop plan from a policy perspective, you know, it, it could very well be that. Coming out of the land use element, one of the recommendations or implementation strategies is to look at our next zoning rewrite from a. More of a form based aspect. So if you do that, you're kind of getting a little farther away from what's been traditional zoning here. Which is what we call Euclidean because it's specific to certain uses. And, you know, so if that's the case, then whatever you do now may or may not. Dumbtailed into that is all I'm saying. So I'm not saying, don't, I'm not saying, don't take a look at it. I'm just saying, just understand that if you do. You know, the, the finality of the comp plan might suggest another approach.
And I, I guess what I'm looking for is can we have. Some input because we may have to do, you know, I understand we would want to limit this. But, you know, there, things are happening that people may want to do things. And. I, I guess, is there a way of saying, well, right now we're at this and we feel that, you know, be safe to make this zoning change or no, we need to wait because. This is, you know, dependent on a whole lot of things. Some things we, we will know from looking at the map that it's not going to change dramatically or, or that it has a chance of changing. Maybe we won't know, but we'll have, we could have good ideas. I mean, after all, the, the, the comprehensive plan gets to decide where the, where the things are in, in the land use.
Yeah, I mean, if, if it's the planning commission's desire to relook at those three rezoning requests, we can simply reach back out to the applicants and ask them to bring them forward. I mean, it's, it's really that, there's not a lot to it, I don't think. So it's just a matter of whether or not you have that. Collective desire to consider their requests at this time, or if you want to. You know, I think, I think. I mean, it seems like at this point they have kind of said, okay, you know, we will save one. I think, I think that, you know, obviously the hillview rezoning seems like they want to continue to. Push forward regardless of the recommendation, but I think the other two have all said, yeah, we will, you know, we'll work within the confines of the comprehensive plan and see where that lands. So it's just, it's completely up to you guys. It's however you, you, you want to direct staff to, to handle those.
And I guess. I'm still not hearing a real, I guess I'd like to, as, as commitment to a schedule somehow. So we know if we're talking about two weeks or two years. And I know it's not two weeks, but I'm, I'm not sure it's not two years yet. And, and we may be getting asked questions in two weeks.
I mean, I. Can probably help out with that to service. I mean, we're in the. We have any exact timeframe for.
No, I mean, there's a lot of moving parts at this point and, you know, if. Aside from a global pandemic. If I think, you know, if we're doing. A month on the. Survey puts us into middle of November, December, subcommittee, January. Like early spring would be probably the earliest realistically. To get through that comp plan and then there's zoning recommendations that are out of that. But, you know, as far as making own changes or text amendments. I think the commission needs to be comfortable with the information that they have. And if the mission's comfortable making decisions based on, you know, the outreach that's gone on already. The comprehensive plan, if things are consistent with that. Is how you would make your decisions. And I think the new piece of information that's available is that where should we grow? That wasn't available during that, during those original requests, other than that, the most recent one.
And, and I guess I'm trying to understand that, to me, the where should we grow says that's what you put into the land use map.
The where and then the how, yes. Yeah.
Well.
The one alternative is, you know, you have an existing comp plan that is there now. So until this plan's adopted, the 2009 plan. Is the plan and the zoning ordinance that's in place is the zoning ordinance. So. You know. Regardless of schedule, you know, it's really a decision about whether or not you want to proceed under. What exists currently, or if you want to continue to. Ask people to participate in what we believe will be the future. So it really comes down to, kind of, you know, that aspect of.
Yeah, and that, the point that the 2009 comp plan is what is kind of. The policy that you should be following. Revisiting the, looking at the comp plan recommendations from that land use plan and then you can evaluate how that. Zone change fits into that land use. When I was working in New Jersey, you know, we had to do. That regularly, we would go to the comprehensive plan and look at. Recommendations that may or may not be consistent with, between the zoning ordinance and the comprehensive plan. So, you know, that's another tool that you have in evaluating these requests for zone changes. And if the commission's comfortable that the current. And if the commission's comfortable that the current comprehensive plan allows for it or, you know, it may have been overlooked in the writing of the zoning ordinance. So I think that's another tool that you have in making these decisions. That's kind of all I wanted to add for that part.
Okay, okay. I guess I, I would like to see, I mean, yeah, we have the existing plan. I guess I'd like to see how, you know, can we look at the, and maybe we do this as we're doing some of these work groups? Just to say, okay, we, we have the existing land use plan and we have the requirement that we have to have all, all uses. And we have this input from the community that you, you have in the map. Do we see what direction, are we seeing any directions in the, in the land use plan? That could then be transferred to the, an update to the zoning plan. I mean, can we look at stuff? I mean, it, it seems like we have a lot of additional information already. Do we have to wait until all the report pieces are done? They're not all relevant to the, necessarily to the land use in a given area.
You don't, you don't have to wait. You just, you evaluate it against the 2009 plan and any new information.
Okay, and that's what I'd like to do.
You, you all are comfortable, you know, with that information and making that decision. It's your prerogative to make any zone changes you feel, well, not, but.
What's the best way to do that?
I'm sorry, Bill.
Looking for the best way to combine the information that you have now that you, you've generated with the existing plan to say, this, this is how we're looking to change and this request does or does not fit in with that, with what we're thinking of doing. You know, this, this zoning change request that we have, you know, figure out, does that fit what, what the changes are indicated from what you've done so far?
Right, and that would be, you know, we've, I hate to bring up New Jersey again, but that would be on the onus of the applicant to prove to the board that it's consistent with the comprehensive plan and any new information. So they would present, you know, here's what you have in your comprehensive plan currently. Here's what you're working on. Here's why we think it's consistent. So that's, that's how I would approach it. And, you know, that said, I'm kind of coming from the outside as far as how the commission runs and, and that aspect up. But so I would certainly defer that side to George and Greg and Jennifer. But that's just, you know, my opinion and my experience.
Okay. Does anybody else have comments?
I just wanted to, to add, I appreciate Brian's comment about the potential to open the door to other developers or other plans that might want to do the same thing as the three that are pending. Certainly, and, and secondly, I know we're aware that the planning commission is an advisory board and an applicant can always go to the board of commissioners. Even if we say no because we want to table it, you know, they do have that, that right to do that. So I'm questioning the, the wisdom of rushing this. When we're having this survey where we can actually directly contact over a thousand people to hopefully gather information from them to get a sense of where we're going. Since this is a once every 10-year plan, you know, it's just.
I agree. I'm not trying to rush it as much as I'm trying to have the best information available as these questions come up. You know, because I don't think we have to say, well, we don't have any information that we can see until May next year. We, we have some information right now that we've got, that we've got and we'll have, you know, this information that comes from the survey within a, a month or so. Is there a way we could start combining it so that we have the best, best information available for the board of commissioners to make an informed decision? If they choose to.
I mean, I, I guess now we do have a zoning plan and if it's non-compliant, we do have the right to say no and they can take another look once the comp plan, the new comp plan is completed. You do have that right?
Sure.
Correct. That's a good point.
Okay. Okay, Dave, what do you want us to do then?
Your plan? Start thinking about, it's, hang on. And again, I'll post this on the blog. Start thinking about, you know, where your personal interests are and where you might like to get involved. And we can start kind of breaking that up. And from the planning commission, anybody that wants to be involved in specific areas, let us know so we can start getting that together.
Dave, I know a question that had come up in some of our planning meetings was whether or not any agricultural zones were being factored. And is that something that's reflected at this point in planning?
As far as the, as far as where we are with the, where should we grow?
Yes.
I think when you look at that map, I hate to jump around too much, but when you look at the areas that have limited or no growth indicated and green dots for preservation are areas that are likely to want to be preserved. They are. So that's kind of where I would envision, you know, any type of ag policies or ag preservation would occur in those areas or where the public has indicated should occur. And then when we get to the subcommittees for the ag, what are the things that we'll do? And some of the folks at Lehigh County try and use their evaluation process for ag preservation and incorporate that into our planning process so that there's a consistency between those two. I think it's going to be a valuable tool and asset for identifying areas that are suitable for ag preservation. Did I answer your question?
You did, thank you.
You're welcome. Is there comments in the chat?
Looks like there is. One, Mark Walter. Mark Walter there, do you want to speak to this or do you want, or should I just read it? Is Mark Walter here? I just said, since two of the three considerations have agreed to waiting for the comp plan, why is there such heavy interest in pushing one plan forward so fast without the most recent comp plan survey and public consideration since it was tabled for the comp plan? Not real clear what that is referring to, but that's it is written into the chat box.
Was Mark have any more to add? To that? I'll just say that we're just trying, just trying to get a reason, a reasonable idea of how long this is going to take. Because we've told them, you know, a timeframe. And just want to see if there's any way, you know, I, I'm not sure how much they can push. They can always go to the, to the board and say, this is a great idea, but we have this issue or that issue. What, what do you think to the? And, you know, what information do we have that we can give to board of commissioners? So they have the best information to make any decisions they want to make. I'd like, just like to see getting that information out as soon as we can, even if it's in, you know, a working form, a draft form.
Well, my comment now, I'll be very frank with you. When, when we did this dot exercise, you know, it was certainly challenging. And like observing the different people at the tables near me, weren't sure where to put things. So, you know, this is, as Dave said, one piece to the puzzle, but you know, we need, I need to say, you know, where I put my dots, you know, I need to understand further what that means in the global picture of South Whitehall in general. Because someone put a green dot, does that mean, you know, X, Y, or Z? It really wasn't explained that well, what that would mean for zoning or for growth specifically. And if I heard you right, Dave, I think that's what we're hoping with the survey to get to fill in that backstory.
Yeah, so that becomes the information packet that gets distributed to those subcommittees. So those subcommittees evaluate and assess that information. So they assess the areas that have protection. They assess the areas identified, like in the ag preservation example, they look at these areas that were identified for protection through that exercise, look at areas identified for no limited growth and kind of overlay the ag preservation information on top of that. And we'll make recommendations based on that information. So it's consistent with the information provided from the public input on the where. And then the how adds another layer on top of that. So for like the low, none, you know, how would there be any growth? So that information gets funneled into those subcommittees and they, I guess they frame any decisions or evaluations and recommendations through that lens of that public input. Is how that'll, that'll function.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And can you clarify, I remembered that specifically Rich Farm already had, didn't we already put the dots there? So in the center there where it says medium and high, am I looking at the right area?
Yes.
So that was already, there was certain stickers that were placed for where their development was already been proposed.
Yeah, yeah, and that was kind of the, I don't know if it was, that was kind of the black swan in the room, so to speak. It, the timing didn't fit with the exercise, so we kind of had to adjust. But it did help with, you know, people understanding that growth and, you know, how much is actually going to be in there? That one hex does have a lot of improve. So, and I think that's reflective of, you know, a lot of the transportation improvements that are going to be required as part of that development. I think that's what that's reflecting.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay.
Yep, two more real quick in the chat box. What projects in the table for the comp plan? That's from Carl Mabry. And I think the ones we were referring to were, was the potential rezoning off of Snowdrift, where they were looking at some storage, a storage unit facility. The current project that's kind of been bandied about is the 900 Hillview Road rezoning. That's the A V T A property for a, an adult care facility. And then the third one, I believe, was also an adult care facility off of Walbert, kind of in between the cemetery and Rich Farm. So those were the three there. And then Monica Hodges asked, people also place dots far away from their own homes just to keep development away from them. So that, that's a, that's a comment and I, you know, I think, you know, that's kind of human nature, people do that probably with, with comp plan updates. They, they, certainly some people probably do that, others probably look at it a little bit differently and just think about where, you know, the appropriate utilities are and so forth to, 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 to the corridors that are kind of already developed and could be maybe redeveloped more intensely or what happened. Those are the last two comments in the chat box, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Any other comments from the planning commission? All right. I guess go from here to see, you're going to be sending out information on, you know, which, which group you want to be part of. And you'll be sending out the surveys within, you said, a week or so?
Yeah, we're targeting next week. I'll make the changes that we talked about and send it out from there.
Okay.
I just have one question. Brian brought up a great point about receiving political flyers and throwing them out. I did the same thing several times this week. I think everyone's being inundated with these next two weeks. Is there wisdom in waiting to mail them the day after election day? So that the focus that's going on right now currently will be done. And maybe we could send this out as a, a fresh priority for people to consider.
Yeah, like now that the election's over here.
Something positive to think about.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
There's something, I don't know what the other planners feel about that, but I just, I know I'm getting inundated.
Yeah, so we were certainly concerned about that. It doesn't, it certainly can, we can do that. And, you know, we can release the survey and just have, you know, through the website and Parkland Press, whenever we can get it in there and, you know, do that release and save the postcard for after. The election might be a good idea. So that we, you know, it would almost be like a soft opening, having the survey open on the web. And then the, the big push is once those cards go out. So, yeah, it, it'd be nice to hear what other people think about that. Again, the balancing issue is just the timing of getting responses.
Diane's suggestion sounds reasonable to me.
Yeah, and it, I think we're talking two, two weeks, three weeks, two and a half, something like that. A huge amount.
I would add my support Diane's suggestion. From my own experience, I, I went to the mailbox today and I pulled out, I think I must have had about a dozen pieces of mail. Once I, once I dumped the political stuff out of it, I had about three. Well, them were bills. So.
Did you throw those out?
No, I didn't. I wrote the texts and then threw them in the mail.
Okay. Okay, so we want to wait till the day after or a couple of days after the election?
I think so. I think that will give everybody a chance to recover from the election and
All right.
Take a, a fresh view with something new.
Okay. All right, anything else? I think we got everybody's. Okay, George, you answered that question, good.
Yeah, Bill, I just wanted to quickly thank Dave and Greg for all our hard work. The, the stuff that goes into this is amazing. And to watch those two guys work behind the scenes is absolutely incredible. And the stuff that Dave's putting out is really cutting edge, to be honest with you. absolutely incredible. And the stuff that Dave's putting out is really cutting edge, to be honest with you. And so I just wanted to kind of publicly recognize him and Greg for their hard work that they put into this.
Absolutely.
Yeah, agree. Thank you. Very, very good work.
I concur.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dave.
On that note, can we ask for a motion to adjourn? Anybody else?
I think you, I think you saw courtesy of the floor, Mr. Chairman.
Courtesy of the floor. Okay. I thought we were doing that, but go, go ahead.
Is, is there anybody out there that would like to speak courtesy of the floor? Please go ahead and identify yourself and you can address the question.
Hi, I'm Jackie Smith. Sorry, couldn't speak earlier, but can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Um, I know it's not on the.
I was gonna say, Jackie, what's your address?
Oh, my address is 3749 Crestview Drive, Allentown, PA. 18103. Right? And I know it wasn't on the agenda, but I know that it has been discussed recently about the rezoning of uh, the Hillview Drive. And I was wondering, I have quite a couple of comments that I wanted to mention about that because I heard that um, Abe Atia, and correct me if I'm wrong, I heard he popped in uh, courtesy of the floor on a previous week and made a comment that um, all the neighbors were satisfied and he talked to them about his plans. Can anyone confirm or deny that?
I can confirm that, that he did meet with the Board of Commissioners during courtesy of the floor last week and reported that he had met with residents surrounding that development that he's proposed and that the my recollection was his comment was that the neighbors were happy with his plan.
Yes. So um, I want to uh, correct that because I did attend that meeting. And uh, that is quite a lie, if I may say so blatantly. Um, and I was really angry to hear this as well, that he lied so blatantly without any residents there to, as far as I know, correct him. Everyone at the meeting was quite very upset. They were bringing up many reasons and there was a lot of things that went unsolved. We did also write down our names on a paper to get some emails back from him. They were to send out some uh, when uh, renders of some images to residents. I personally uh, haven't gotten an email from them and I'm not sure if any other residents have as well. And I want to point out that Abe uh, in previous meetings has lied uh, to uh, other residents of other buildings he has from uh, if you read back in the chats from, I think it was like three meetings ago. He had a, uh, there were many people who were mentioning that he changes his development plans. He has also said in that meeting that our home values would go up, however, during uh, that they would go up because of employees for his building would be uh, wanting to live in our area. And so our home values would go up because of people moving in. However, uh, he changed that to fit his plans again during this uh, meeting that the neighbors had attended to say that for traffic reasons, that there would be people coming from West End, Allentown, and that they wouldn't be able to afford our homes. So there were two contracting statements, both of which he used to prove his point, but they did not uh, come uh, they did not go together. Along with that, he said that he talked to all the neighbors and they were happy. I have videos from this of all the neighbors speaking out. And I think this is very uh, very just backhanded and not right. So I want everyone to just consider when voting for Hillview, that uh, the neighbors should be present because I don't think that Abe is representing the community as he says he is. We're afraid for our children's safety, for the residents' health and safety, for the financial and collateral repercussions, and the right of the possession and control and right to a quiet environment for neighboring homeowners, for financial repercussions on the township, for unforeseen costs, for the population density increasing development in an already medium density area with lower growth potential, and for the destruction of local wildlife, and for the increase of the traffic. I have a whole list of items that I uh, have written up of everything that the residents have mentioned that they wanted, a lot of which I feel Abe had kind of shrugged off and uh, is trying to minimize costs. And so any of the residents who are on, I would encourage them to either agree or disagree with me. But from what I heard from all the residents I have talked to, they have either not been informed or disagreed. I have not talked to a single person who had agreed to it. Maybe I found two people who had neutral stances on this, that they, they didn't care about the development. So I want that to be taken into consideration. And uh, I'm not going to take too much time. I have a lot more written, but on another meeting when it's discussed on the agenda, I plan to voice that. Thank you.
Thank you.
You need, Jackie Smith needs to know that we have minutes to verify what she's saying.
Thank you.
I spent a good, good chunk of the afternoon reading minutes supporting your position.
Okay.
This is Steven Molinaro, 4261 Clearway. Um, I just want to uh, kind of validate Jackie's claims that no neighbors were excited about anything that Abe had to say. There was a, there was a neighborhood yard sale last weekend where we collected signatures. There was not one signature on a clipboard that says I, I support uh, McConaughey Manor. And over a hundred against it. I'm sorry, not over a hundred, about a hundred against it.
Okay. Thank you, Steve.
Carl Mabry, 909 Hillview Road. Um, I'd also like to support what Jackie said. Abe has appeared to shrug off any suggestion from the township. Nobody was happy at the meeting. I actually have that meeting recorded and posted on YouTube if you care to view it. There were many objections to that. I believe I supplied that to Diane Kelly today. She has the link if you're interested in watching the video of the meeting that Abe uh, conducted at Olympic Park. It's just, I have to support Jackie and everything she said about Abe. You know, one part of the conversation at the meeting he held was uh, you know, I almost uh, canceled this whole entire project because of the noise and the sound from I-78. And then later on in the meeting, we brought up building a wall for noise abatement. And he says, oh, no, I wouldn't want to do that because my residents appreciate watching traffic. And uh, so he, 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 he talks not so honestly. Let's just put it that way. And uh, to say that we were happy at that meeting is a total misrepresentation if not a lie. So I'd like to support Jackie again on that. And like I said, there is a link on YouTube. I can supply it to you all of the entire, well, three or four minutes of the meeting, but I think there's an hour and 16 minutes of the meeting on there up to the closed where they wanted to wrap it up and they were tired of hearing of our objections. And uh, that's all I have to say.
Diane, you have that?
Yes, um, Carl reached out to me today in my capacity as a township commissioner and had a conversation with him and he did send me that link. I have not had a chance to view it yet, but I'll be happy to forward it to anybody who'd like it.
I'd be interested in seeing that. Thank you.
Okay, I'll send it out by email to the entire board.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any more comments? Because we have one from Greg Sloan that agrees with that.
Yeah, there's, there's two in there, Mr. Chairman. Mark Walter, blatant misrepresentation, large volume of residents. Opposed the project to Hillview. Greg Sloan, wow, I didn't know Atia did that. That's outrageous. I'm not happy with Atia's project. He does not speak for me. And then there's one last comment from Jackie to, for posting extra comments.
So um, we can keep, keep the chat open. Can we do that? I think we can. How do we do that?
Yeah, if you want to adjourn the meeting, I can, I can um, stop the recording. It will, I'll, I'll just stay here for a couple more minutes until those come in and then it'll be captured in the recording for Greg when he does the, the minutes.
Okay. And um, is there another way to comment? Just out of curiosity?
Yeah, sure. You can always write, you can uh, send comments into our department. And certainly attend any meetings that might be, so any meeting that requires a formal action, the neighbors would be notified. Greg sends that out. I think it's everybody within so many hundred feet.
And then. The George.
Residents who do not live in South Whitehall Township.
George, um, ordinance specifies Planning Commission is notified everyone within 300 feet of the tract. Board of Commissioners is not. Traditionally, traditionally, we have notified by mail, people who have expressed an interest in being notified, either by speaking at a meeting or specifically asking to be mailed. I do have a mailing list for that. That's why I, my second point is that I, I want to, want everyone to know that if you are making a comment, please include your name and address, particularly in the chat box, because then I can take that as your interest in being notified. So if you make a comment in the chat box or, or verbally, without giving your name or address, I can't include you in the mailing list. So if you've made a comment in the chat box, please go back and put your name and address in before this meeting ends so that I can record that.
Yeah, I'll keep, I'll go ahead and keep the chat box open till, uh, let's see, if you adjourn now, I'll keep it open till, how is 10 of the 10:50 sound? I'll keep that open till then.
So Greg, for clarification, um, it sounds like Mr. Atia at the last Board of Commissioners meeting mentioned that he would probably bring his plan before the Commissioners. And your comment that you just made about contacting people regarding this plan, are you saying that you're going to contact them if it goes before the Board of Commissioners?
Yes, for, for, for the people who have expressed an interest in being contacted, yes.
Okay, I wanted to clarify.
And that, that would be whenever, whenever I'm notified that he's on the agenda, if it's strictly courtesy of the floor where you can't do an action, if he shows up that night, I, I can't notify anyone. So um, this is for agenda items only.
Yeah, I would also just add that for the commission to consider, if there has to be a motion, this is, this would be an ordinance. And Jennifer, correct me if I'm wrong, but there's a motion to advertise first, uh, which I believe is put out in the newspaper. Uh, and then that's followed by, I think it's 30, I think there's a 30-day window then before the, that first reading would come back to the commission.
George, are you talking about a referral to the LBPC? Because?
No, 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 I'm just talking about the, how they, how we advertise an ordinance in general.
Okay, so after the advertising, you wouldn't need a 30-day period. Yeah, so it could come back around at the very next Board of Commissioners meeting, just depending on when the advertising takes place.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
All right, I, I will continue to collect comments if the, if the board is ready to adjourn at this point.
Okay, the comments are uh, Jackie says she's done, but there's, dude, can we save this chat? Does the chat get saved? Out of curiosity?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, good. So, so we have it all there.
No, I'll have that to Greg first thing in the morning.
Actually, George, this, this gets it to me automatically.
Okay, so I don't need to send it to you?
No. Now, however, the link to the YouTube stuff, that, that I would like to get anyway, but um, yeah, for some reason I get these automatically in Word, so.
I get them as, I get them as well. Like, it was a chat log.
Yep. I, I think they may be automatically posted to your My Documents folder.
Yeah. Because I saw.
Well, Greg, then I'll, I'll rely, I'm not in the office tomorrow, so I'll rely on you to get that over to Steve. He's the one that does the conversions to YouTube.
Now, the problem is that I don't get the notification from go-to-meeting on the reading recording.
Okay, I'll send it over.
That's, that's something somebody else gets.
Okay.
Okay. So maybe they'll slow down soon. Again, thank you, Dave, and thank you, Greg, for your work on, on all this. And I will once again try to entertain a motion to adjourn.
I moved.
Second.
Okay, second move, move by Diane, second by Al. Roll call?
Dave Dunbar.
Okay.
Ryan Hyde.
Hi.
Diane Kelly.
Hi.
Bill McNair.
Hi.
Alan Tope.
Hi.
David Wilson.
Hi.
Motion passes six to zero.
Okay.